This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we'll get, we'll call the order in Monterey Select Board 5:30 PM on April 2nd, and we have all members present here in Town Hall. The first item of business is going to be the update from the town clerk. So Chris is going to join us in a second here. We're just basically taking a look at roles, responsibilities, and time. And getting an update from Chris. And the line, the relevant lines would be 161, 162, and 163. Record.
Can you do this, Chris?
Oh yeah, sorry.
Oh, I'll go do something else, sorry.
Oh my God.
Hi, Chris.
Hey, Chris.
How are you doing, everyone? Sure, sure. Thank you for letting me work to the very bitter end there. Actually got two dog licenses to do, so that's a good sign that the backlog is, is being hit.
Have we viewed their bill? The bill for the dog licenses?
Yes. I turned that in last week, so it's in the process of being processed.
No problem, that's all I want to know.
Also answered an email regarding that today.
I had the email in my inbox, that's the question.
Yep.
Okay.
So, general state of affairs of the clerk's office is that, like I said, the backlog is being worked through. Gearing up for the annual town meeting and the local election. For the local election, I got together a draft ballot and sent that out to the company that prints out the auto-mark ballot, which is required by law. That takes a decent amount of lead time. It's all been entered into the state voter registration system. I don't anticipate any problems with the annual town meeting or the local election. My proposal for the schedule going from here on out is a three-day work week, seven hours a day totaling 21 hours. I did a back-of-the-envelope assessment of what is left in the budget for my salary, and that supports that 21-hour work week without moving any funds whatsoever.
Are we going to be okay, based on that, we should be okay for the averaged hours of work not to exceed 20?
That is a question, Chris. Just because, once we have employees can consistently, I believe the wording is consistently working more than 20 hours, they have to enroll anniversary counter-retirement and be offered health insurance.
Understood, and the back-of-the-envelope assessment of mine did not include that. So that is definitely something to take into consideration.
Yep. That being said, I mean, we're not trying to be stingy here, but because we don't have health insurance, retirement set aside for the position, 19 keeps us below that threshold.
Understood.
And going above 20 could kind of open up a can of worms. Not that, if we need, if that's the needs of the position, we need to have that discussion. We need to get the job done. But just being aware that we're working with that reality.
I went into that eyes wide open.
Yeah.
Not surprised by this conversation.
Would it be possible to do a, do we, do we know the whole number of hours we worked in this fiscal year? Can we do that calculation somehow?
Yeah, we can figure that out, but what I can do is I can, I probably better to get in touch with the retirement system and ask them what the prob, what that means consistently.
I'm not sure it's just the retirement system, it's the issue is, it's the state's requirement regarding part-time work. So, as I understand it, I mean, you could reach out and say, but as I understand it, it means that the average number of hours per week averaged over the year has to be less than 20.
Right, the magic 19 and a half, right. So I can find out from the retirement system first what that means, and then we can go.
But we can also just look at the number of hours logged to the clerk for the year.
Right, I just want to make sure that, I just want to make sure that it's not consistently worded, because consistently worded, one month, two months of consistently working, that may kick into retirement. It might not matter what the average was.
For the year, I see.
Could be what it is moving forward.
Okay, maybe we need to get answer on both those things. Would it be, would it be the retiring people, or would it be the state?
Try the state, local services.
Yeah, DLS.
Now, I currently do have access to the Harper's system, and I have administrative rights at least for the election workers and for myself.
So you could probably count on your hours, yeah.
I will see if I can pull those numbers together. My proposal, so going back to, sorry, was there any more discussion about the health insurance slash benefit?
Well, I think it should be part of the conversation going forward, but I'd be curious to hear from you more what your proposal is and where things are at.
So I proposed, and this is just for the kind of April, keeping with that 21-hour week. And that's something that I came up with because I can carry that consistently through the summer when school is out with my kids and my schedule. So that's kind of, also that's the upper limit. So anything less than that can also be discussed. Three days a week is the kind of the max amount of days per week I'll be able to make myself available. So if we need to shorten those seven-hour shifts, we can do it that way. That still offers us coverage for posting for agendas and minutes and not leaving us where there's three, four, five workdays where I'm not in the office.
Are you now, how has the agenda posting been going? Has it been you, are you now doing the agenda posting for all the boards and committees?
Yes, haven't gotten any negative feedback yet. So for the best of my knowledge, it's going fine.
And just to jog everyone's memory a little bit, the formal policy of the board, that the board has set a couple of years ago was that when the agenda form gets submitted online, it goes to the town clerk and the town administrator, and either can then go ahead and post the agenda depending on schedule.
Yes.
And it gives us that redundancy. Another thing that's happened informally, not in contradiction to policy, but separately, is that a few, three or four boards and committees can post their own agendas. I think that's really, at this point, Planning Board, Select Board, by law, if you count on aging, by law, I view. So just to take that into consideration as we move forward.
Now, I did set the post-ground, we're on aging, so.
Yeah.
But the Select Board, the Bylaw, and the, I'm sorry, what was the third one you just said? The Planning Board. I don't believe that I have posted any of those, it's possible. My feeling on that is as long as the open meeting law requirements are being met, I'm, I'm fine if those certain few boards post their own readings, as long as it's consistent.
Did, did you get the OSRP?
I did.
One, okay, because I wasn't sure which of you was getting that.
That was posted this morning.
Margie just, yeah, Margie just sent me.
Corresponded with Margie and just.
Just brought it to mind, okay.
And we will continue, Roger and I have been really communicative in that, and that's when they get turned in or emailed, emailed to both of us, just in case I'm out. That way he can do it.
Great, thanks guys for working together.
Sure. One is, there's, are you guys, which, who's controlling like the jobs and stuff like that? Someone told me the town administrator jobs still posted.
Oh, I can go, I probably have access to that, I'll go check and I'll fix that.
The other question I had about the calendar was that, like, the Planning Board is like, I forget, on Thursday, twice a month or once a month. Do we ever plan on carrying those out for like three months instead of waiting the week before, or?
I don't really like that idea in general, because, so for Select Board, we might meet nine Tuesdays in a row at 6:00 PM. And then we skip one where we meet on Wednesday, or we skip three weeks. And if we are to post, if we're to post an agenda, you know, that's a little bit problematic, and if we just post saying there's going to be a meeting, if that's not our, if that's our legal posting under the OML, then you have to go and make an amended agenda when you actually know what the agenda is going to be. So I think the way to do it is really do it, you know, three days, five days, if you know, two weeks, post two weeks in advance, but.
I agree with that also because I've found by making mistakes that changing things once they're posted is very clunky on the website. And I actually just go ahead and unpublish anything that I have published with mistake and start over from scratch. So anything that would be reoccurring would kind of fall into that category and not save me any time, really.
All right, I just, that's fine.
I mean, it's one thing to have a, on our page, on that left bar, saying meetings are usually this time, but see posting for act, you know, but subject to change or whatever.
We can do it, I mean, we're in a transition area, so we can come back and visit, but everybody get comfortable with doing it, you know.
I feel our bases are being covered right now. Yeah, I don't see any reason why that would change in the future.
Okay, what else?
So, back to the proposed April schedule. I have dates if we'd like to go as far as that. Roger's pretty much just looked it up in me as far as what days that I'm in.
Are they the same dates as we?
No, they're not.
Okay.
And they're, I, that's why I like to post a month out.
Right.
And I post, or I try very, you know, purposefully in my scheduling to not have too many weekdays pass in a row where I'm not in the office. So it's a, it's a Monday, Thursday, or it's a Tuesday, Friday kind of thing, it's not a Monday, Tuesday. Now, that will happen occasionally, but I think we've set ourselves up for success even when that does happen.
I'm going to throw the idea that maybe we should have him post the hours dialing back to 19 a week. And then if it turns out it's all going to be okay, I'd rather have us, you know, let you work the additional two hours even if they're not posted, then go the other way.
So. Is that a motion, a vote sort of thing?
Yes.
That one we're all on, we're down there.
You guys give the business of Select Board that.
So by, by general consensus, the Select Board agrees that, that, you know, you as a town clerk can work 19 hours a week for the rest of fiscal year. Because we understand that it's within the budget.
Understood, so I will post the rest of April schedule tomorrow and stay under that 19-hour cap. If there's any extenuating circumstances or emergencies beyond that, I will let the Select Board know. Annual town meeting, I would like to post some information on my webpage about that. Do we have a time, an o'clock for the, I noticed that there was a draft of the warrant. So I think it's going to be nine or 9:30.
It says 9:30 on the warrant.
9:30. When could I safely rely on that?
No, no.
Now, okay, so 9:30 AM.
9:30, and then the day is, we don't need, we, you know, we don't have to say.
Yeah.
Nine is usually when somebody does an STM the same day as the ATM.
Yeah, we've talked about.
We're not even going. No, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So that takes care of that. Posting of minutes is something that a number of people have brought up. I have no problem posting minutes. We, Roger and I, along with the help of Nancy Feeden, are going to do an assessment of what has been posted and what I had in hard copy in each individual board and committee folder and see the discrepancies between that and try to rectify that situation. I, I feel that handling the minutes is exactly the same, actually, it's not even exactly the same as posting minutes or posting meeting agendases, because that's not really, there's more wiggle room involved in that. I don't think that Roger needs to be involved in the actual posting of the minutes. Any board or committee member can just send them directly to me, you know, along with archiving the hard copy. I will post them to place.
I do like how that streamlined, and I think, like you said, as opposed to agendas where there is a timeliness to it, minutes, the timeliness of minutes are timely, but never within hours or days.
There's some wiggle room.
Just so everyone knows, again, the policy that's in place, the formal policy, is that they're emailed to both admin and clerk. The part of the reason I'm bringing those things out is because maybe in a few weeks or a few months, we review those policies and say, this is what's working well, efficient, gives us redundancy, and maybe they stay the same, or maybe they don't. Maybe there's an online, maybe we find out an online forum keeps them more consistent. We know some people come in and they do hard copies.
Yeah, that's what I have to do, if somebody else is doing this, I'm not supposed to be doing this anymore because I'm not the secretary.
But you don't have an email.
I don't have an email, so I bring them in hard copy.
So maybe if the policy, you know, if we're going to have a policy and we know some people are going to bring them in hard copy, the policy should probably reflect that and say.
It should be allowable, yeah.
It should be potentially allowable. Just bringing this all.
Logistically from your short, yes, logistically.
So you want them to go to Chris, not to Roger, which I did last time.
Yeah, we're good, sorry, I didn't answer. And for me, that even if it does come in in hard copy, I scan it into digital form and post it that way, so that's no problem.
Yeah, yeah. So, I think part of what's, well, we all have lived, but these two roles of town administrator and town clerk, there's some things that are, you know, can be done by both, or are you traditionally done by the town clerk or usually done by the town administrator? I think we're just fleshing that out, and we're being cooperative and productive and trying to figure out what makes sense for efficiency and redundancy, and I think that's all of it.
Yeah, we've made good progress on that. Thanks. Other than that, I have two scheduled time off coming up. I just put in my request for those today. One is in mid-June for my annual family vacation, and the other one is in mid-July for my training for MENCI training, that'll be a week. So those are already filed with Roger. From here on out, meaning after the local election and annual town meeting, along with the assessment of the minutes, then planning to go from there with special projects is the continuation of the Boards and Commissions database, which is going to become much more important. Melissa did keep her own list on that. That's obviously going to fall solely to me now, and I want to make sure that that is comprehensive enough to date before we need that information. So that's just on like the, the summer radar more of this.
Yeah.
Also, town census, Council on Aging requested a list of town residents over the age of 60. They did that two different ways, and not to get into the weeds, by running a search query on our town census database for what Council on Aging was requesting. There are still people that were born 1900 active in our town census. So that is in sore need of updating as well. Also, that goes for voter registration rolls. That's something that you keep up on as it goes, but they can never be too clean.
Yeah, I can tell you that when I, when I ran, I got a lot back. I mean, probably of the six hundred I spent, I got over 100 returned.
Yeah.
And what was told by the clerk at the time that she didn't need that information, you know. So hopefully we can get that.
Here's what I'll say about that, and I'm glad, I'm glad you mentioned that, because since I've been town clerk for a year, the 10 hours a week was enough to just kind of keep my head above water. Those are the kinds of things that come with a little extra time, and it's, it's worthwhile.
Yeah.
It's worth the, it's worth the town's money to have those essential databases streamlined and up to date. And that's, that, what the address that Susan's talking about was coming from the census data?
Correct, from the voter, like voter registration.
And so those two lists, they can be accessed individually, or they can be accessed collectively through the state voter registration system.
But there is, there is a semi-rigorous process to remove people to the point where, is there?
It's really not that rigorous, no, it's all done in-house.
But I mean, if someone doesn't reply to one census, you can't take them off.
No, there is, there's a clearly defined course of action.
Yeah, and it could take years.
I believe it's four years of not returning a census will get you changed from an active voter to an inactive voter. And it also has to do with how many federal election cycles that you do not vote. So there are clear rules about it.
So it'd be time, I'm assuming, to actually remove people because you need to confirm that the criteria are met.
Sure, yes. Yeah, absolutely, you can't just go in and say, okay.
I think he.
All of that is recorded, you can actually, for any voter, and it's all public knowledge, for any voter, you can go in and see all of their voter activity. You can't see who they voted for, but you can see that they voted in the local election, the state election. And you can also see any changes made by any clerk throughout that voter's history. So it's all recorded.
And I suspect a bunch of them were probably people from Gould that were here during election cycle and then moved downtown.
That is a hot topic.
They don't necessarily say.
I got a stack of probably at least 10 from former residents that still have current addresses at 100 Gold Farm from, I can't remember the lady's name.
Right.
I have a stack of them in my office that's approximately 4 inches tall. And so beyond that, beyond the summer radar, the real next question, and this is FY '25. Just where do we go with FY '25? And taking that into consideration, if there's anything large changes that we want to make, having anything that might need to go on the annual town meeting warrant. I, right off the top of my head, I don't foresee that. I think the 19-hour cap from now till then will suffice. But just keeping, you know, an eye to the future.
So the way that I see what we have budgeted for next year is 10 hours a week plus an extra 100. So plus, if you average that hour the whole year.
And I believe that was the same from FY '24.
Yeah, it kind of is, but it, for some, for some reason, is down 7%.
Okay.
So I don't know what that's all.
I was thinking, I'd have to review, I can't remember right off.
You know what, maybe because Marie was like experienced town clerk, and I forget where, that must be part of it.
I think it was the hourly rate changed because of the difference in population.
Um, that would make sense.
So we're at about 12 hours a week. And maybe we can review that and see where we're at.
Sure.
I know that there's things that I, that you would be able to do with extra hours, and I think are worthwhile. And you mentioned a number of things. I think having like town meeting warrants backed a little bit further than we do.
Posted on the website, yeah?
Yeah, because we only have back to 2005, it's a little bit spotty. And so many of the PDFs, every other page is upside down.
Yeah.
So annoying, oh my God.
So there's things like that where I think, you know, I could totally see where hours could be put in. And I, I think I kind of tend to agree based on what little I know, the hours that you had were kind of like keeping your head above water.
Fairly.
Yeah. So this is more like, how can we?
And with this one eye looking always forward, as I get these things that sorely need to be done, that haven't been done in a long time done, I'm more willing to have a conversation with taking on more responsibility, more duties, more tasks, you know, as the situation, as the situation allows, yeah.
But are we pretty much limited to the three days you said is the, is the cap?
Three days and 21 hours. And 21 hours, now that would change, that's a year-round, that's kind of what I can provide a year-round. That would obviously change the minute that school is back in session.
All right, well, I think it's definitely to think about for the budget. And it's good to kind of get a sense of how you feel this is going to get. You have any questions?
I think there's probably a lot of.
When you're going to do the boards and commissions, just like, this will sound weird, but start now and go back, don't do it the other way, please.
Yeah, with current members.
Yes, because that's going to be the most pressing, I think, when we're going to have to assess who we need to re-up for board.
And I feel that, starting with what is actually in the database digitally, going over what I have in the file cabinet on hard copy, and reaching out to every board and commission, committee.
To make sure that it's their roster.
Yes, exactly, so it will be kind of a three-fold verification process.
You know what I've done, which is a little bit clumsy, and I don't know if it would fit in or how it would fit in, but go back, I've gone back through Select Board minutes and just looked at appointment.
Sure. I have a lot of, I have a lot of their emails as well.
Yeah.
So I, I get generated automatic appointment emails, that will be very useful for doing that.
Well, and here's the reason why I do Select Board minutes, because as far as I'm concerned, if it's in the minutes of Select Board, it happened, and if it didn't, it didn't happen. And these other ways, like the emails are hopefully like 99% or 100% reliable, and asking people has its advantages because sometimes the paper misses things. But really, if it isn't in Select Board minutes, unless you're talking about the few other positions in town that are appointed by other boards and committees, then it didn't happen. But I also remember, so I did about six months that way, and it's time for soon. So maybe that's not a good way to do it, I was just thinking back through.
It would be that, like, there's usually that one meeting where we do a big hit.
Yes, well.
And that's definitely.
But we've also gotten better now, and used to be pretty bad. I feel like my first year on the board, it was like a point up here and there, and now we've gotten it all back on June 30th.
Yeah, except like there's four tonight, and there have been the last of, so stuff does happen.
Melissa did keep a database on that as well, and I do have that in my inbox, so that's actually a source of information for that. And between all of that, I'm going to see if I get a pretty darn comprehensive, you know, view.
And one thing's for sure, if the chair of a committee says that person, that person's not on the board, they're probably not. Because if they're not showing up to meetings, even if they were appointed, it's kind of a move.
I can speak personally, there are registrars that have never even showed up to be sworn in, so I know exactly what that's.
There's a lot of people that are showing up to be sworn in, or if all of them have our ethics. And the general consensus over the years, or my thought was, it's tough, but usually you don't remove them for not being sworn in because they're volunteers in the first place. We'd like everyone to get sworn in, but we had that discussion of do we just remove people?
Different boards and committees.
But if they never show up to meetings?
Yeah, but there are people who show up to meetings and don't do the training.
Different boards and committees, very different way.
Yeah. Yeah, if it was Select Board, that could be very problematic. Yes. Because, yeah, or any board that gets sued, you know. All right, so I guess we'll move forward, you'll do 19 a week for the rest of fiscal year?
Yep.
And we'll consider with, throughout the budget, what additional hours we might be able to run.
And I'll keep you guys posted on how that's working for me in the office. And I'll keep you guys posted on how that's working for me in the office.
And thanks for keeping us updated on the workflow and how it goes along. Great.
And also in the back of all of our minds is agendas, minutes, and other things that have kind of split responsibility. Uh I think we have a way forward for those things for now, and then do we want to um see what works and maybe change the policies to reflect what what works?
Like, not.
Chris and I sort of brainstorm at least once a week on something.
Yeah.
You know, Chris comes in and we talk about stuff with that same way. It's like, I understand he has his responsibilities and I don't want to take his responsibilities from him. So I.
Always keeping an eye on, you know, and streamlining, streamlining.
And also, um, Chris is uh, when he knows what his schedule is, he comes in and says, this is my schedule, so are you going to be here? Because if something comes in or if an agenda comes in that needs to be taken care of, so we're communicating pretty well.
Yeah.
So the past couple of weeks, we've gotten going moving forward.
Thank you, gentlemen, for working so well together.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you very much. We'll have a pleasant evening. Thanks, Chris.
So um, Michael just once said that he can be down here in five minutes, or if you want to tell him what time we'd like him to stop by.
And he come late.
Yeah, I'm sure. He he thought we weren't meeting till uh, he thought we weren't meeting till seven, so.
Well, let's kind of go under that.
Okay, do you want me to tell him that you're seven o'clock?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, okay.
Which sounds really late, but well, why don't we plan on seven, since we're not really meeting at the five minutes?
Right, exactly.
So the next agenda item is earth removal permit renewal for triennial construction.
Which is in all of us?
Yeah. So we are accepting this.
He says again.
Because.
Where are they removing the earth from?
Yeah, that's what I want.
The gravel pit.
How many more years of gravel pit are in the gravel pit?
Sounds like a few decades.
Oh, okay.
They have to on the earth, maybe one year, four years.
Okay.
Or ten.
That's not twenty, forty, ten, hmm, or maybe tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. A bit of a time, until they stop asking.
Select board hearing date. We should vote, actually, sorry, we should vote on this just because I was, it's fairly torn on yet.
I move that we uh approve the earth removal permit for triennial construction.
Second.
And I probably comment, Michael.
Oh, they can keep digging.
All right, I'll call.
Because I need to have my driveway considered this year or next.
Call a vote, Frank.
Yes.
Susan?
Yeah.
And Justin, yes, so that's unanimous approval. Your generation is variable conditions. I'm not going to put any conditions down. Conservation Commission appointments. Um so we have four, which would bring our membership up to five members and would be really nice to round it out to seven.
Wouldn't it be easier to reduce to five?
Okay, I I'm actually going to say I like raising this early.
No, we didn't. We talked about it.
I think we should, I think we should go ahead and reduce it to five because this has been such an ongoing issue of keeping members. And personally, I if I had to guess, I think at least one of these people will not last a month. So I I would like to see us lower it to five, so we um we give ourselves that opportunity. Can I mean, can we do alternates like?
Here's why I like seven. Because right now we have five. Like I said, people may drop out.
Yeah.
So you need three more.
No.
Because they'll drop out and you have seven.
So people may draw. It's a very intensive, it may be the most intensive board or committee. That's not the select board.
You don't want popularity.
Yeah, and you basically get it's have negative interactions, unfortunately, sometimes. So all that being said, I think we're at five. Quorum under the different laws is based on the number of people appointed, not the not the number of possible seats.
Oh, really?
Yes.
I thought it was based on the number of possible seats.
Under open meeting law it is. Under wetlands protection act, it's not. So the reason why I like seven is because you can appoint a six and your quorum out of six is.
You've already changed my mind just by telling me. I I was assuming it was based on the number of seats.
Yeah.
And that was my concern.
Yeah, no, a hundred percent I would agree.
Okay.
I'll double, I'll.
If that's the case, I'm okay with leaving it seven, but if it's based on the number of actual members, then then I think we need to bring it down.
I'm gonna I'm gonna pull it up, but that being said, you know, that gives you bring you a point of six. Someone drops out, you still have five.
Right.
Uh as opposed to someone drops out, you have four.
Well, and the other option would be to have alternate. Not that we have alternate.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do they have any other alternates for anything else?
The problem.
The VA theoretically should have two alternates, but we haven't had them in ages.
Even divvily, this situation where both comments and below threat are correct. Mass EPs, Wetlands Protection Act regulations, standard quorum requirements, but provided that a quorum of concom is a majority of the members in an office.
Okay.
He actually said in the same email that two members could act. You go to mass general law about concom, it says concom needs to be between three and seven members.
So two members.
I don't know, but in any case, it seems pretty clear that that quorum is the number, I'm forwarding this down. I think I may have already, but.
I don't remember seeing it, but that doesn't mean it's not. I usually read anything that comes from you, but stuff happens.
And that, so anyway, and we have the four in front of us. We're still working on a couple of people.
We are?
We're working on.
Can I talk to people?
Yeah.
Nobody that I nobody I've talked to even gave me that it's possible.
Didn't go over real well.
No, everyone just looks at me like you have to be kidding me. Like, no, maybe some other time. I can't believe that.
The person you're talking about.
Yeah.
That'll be mine.
I think.
Things can change. That's for sure. I'm pretty sure at least one of these is going to be changed.
So all that being said, I would move to appoint the following people, the Conservation Commission um for the specified lengths of time.
What are the specified lengths of time?
Oh, we're not. Michael Tramine for one year.
Okay.
Pauline Van Ducci for two years, Donald Hutcher for three years, and Catherine Roberts for three years.
And just out of curiosity, how how did the years get picked for the various members?
So, well, that was a personal negotiation.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
What about Noel's?
Noel's expires next in about a year. And the reasoning behind this is technically, when you start a conservation commission, you should stagger the seats. After you've established a concom, all the appointments should be three years.
Right.
We've run into this with town council before, and the general advice has been you're essentially beginning to stagger them.
I had no questions about why they were staggered, just about how each what the choices were concerning the.
Oh, yeah, that was personal negotiations.
Okay, that's fine.
To end that to some degree.
Right.
You're saying number of years that you're going to start them on what?
I thought about making them expire on on June thirtieth. The difficulty there is I don't think we can make an appointment for longer than three years.
Oh, okay, because I was thinking, you know, if you could have them the one year, they they start now, but the one year only starts counting, you know, July first. They have a couple of months.
When when.
Training time.
When we uh when we have all these ad hoc committees, we'll make the appointments fourteen months or.
Yeah.
Eighteen months to line up with June thirtieth. I don't really want to mess with it here just because of what what's at stake. And I was thinking, I thought about doing that, and then I thought it's very possible that we shouldn't be allowed to make appointments longer than three years. Would, does anyone have any questions?
Play a board.
I understand you're thinking about it.
But that's just to say, I think almost came out.
Is seventeen versus five?
I would try to go.
Well, what's that?
I would try to go for seven.
Oh, I'm all for, I like, if we think we can get them, it's just it's been really hard, but as long as the quorum is based on the number of people actually seated.
Yeah.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, okay.
That was my concern, that there that we were lacking quorum because it was based on seven and we only had four.
Is, so there is a motion on the forum for those appointments. Is is are there any questions before I call a vote? Kind of call a vote.
I'll second the motion.
Call a vote, Susan?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
And Justin, yes, so that's unanimous approval. Thank you to all those people who are stepping up to volunteer and serve the town on the concom. Roger, these are the first appointments that we're making, so.
Speaking of keeping a list of appointments.
The standard practice is for the town administrator to send a letter on behalf of the select board to each appointee. It's a pretty standard letter that says you've been appointed to X for X time. And at this point, you need to go into the town clerk and get sworn in, and you need to do open meeting law and state ethics. We can basically find that letter for you.
He probably has the one he got when he appointed him for finance.
Or he had somewhere.
Yeah, so at this, so at this, at this point, if you could please put that on your agenda to email those people. If you need emails, I have them.
I mean, this has to be an official letter on letterhead.
It doesn't have to, as long as it gets done, as long as people do get sworn in. If someone doesn't have email, then we can snail mail it to them, but.
Not that anyone's looking at you, Mickey.
It really bothers me, you know.
I know.
If he did, you'd change it.
I'll work on that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we can discuss more than kind of what we discussed. There's a community centered committee appointment, Karen Anderson, which I would recommend be for a year and a few months through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And I will move to appoint Karen Anderson to the Community Center Committee through, actually, June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
I I have a weird question. The only my only question here would be, is there a reason not to do two years through that date?
Because everyone on that committee is just a one year.
They're a one minute. There we go. All right.
All right, are there any comments before we vote on that? All right.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so it's unanimous approval.
Thank you, Karen.
Karen, uh that's through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and that's a fifth letter for you, Roger.
Awesome.
Thank you. Okay, police department donation uh from a Mary Kate R. Jordan, J O R D O N, Stevens Lake, twenty five dollars. So this formality, the select board needs to accept, yes.
I mean, there's nothing to sign, so just say, uh, thank you, Ms. Jordan, for your generous donation to the police.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the select board has accepted the donation. Uh the next item of business is the town administrator contract, so.
I read through it. Um I didn't see any, I didn't have any suggestions.
I had one thing that I thought needed to be changed or fixed rather, which is, this sounds stupid, but in section nine C, sick leave.
Let me just pause.
No problem. That's okay.
Nine C?
Nine C, sick leave. Um according to the Monterey employee manual, not, it's yet completely finalized one, which, by the way, I still haven't heard back from Mary Ann. So I will now bug about her today, uh is a max accrual of ninety days, and if there's no max accrual listed there, it just says we can accrue it.
Yeah.
So I think it, we need to have a max accrual of ninety days as per the Monterey employee manual.
So.
Sorry.
So how how can, first of all, are you acceptable? Very, uh I'm I'm okay with that. I'm 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 used to.
Ninety days is too much, especially more because it's ninety actual working days, right? So that would be what, five into ninety, one, three, four, eighteen weeks?
Yeah, there's no uh, there's no long term, short term sick. Well, that's there's no long term. That that works for me. I mean, where I where I worked before, it was only because I'd worked there for so long, I had almost a year sick leave, so. So not ninety days is good.
Yeah, um and we're not tied also to that ninety days because we're making contracts separate from that handbook, which governs in general. We could do a hundred and twenty, but the the idea of having a limit in there. The only other question I would have would be wording, because we can either go sick days may be carried over from one fiscal year to another, but not more than ninety days. Or we can say, well, how is it worded in there?
Oh, sorry, I have to bring that back. This was my notes, but let me mention.
Oh, wait, it's in the contract, it's sick days, not taking a sick leave within a fiscal year, maybe carry over from one fiscal year to another. As long as everyone's in agreement, we could just put comma for not more than ninety days.
With a ma- or a maximum accrual of ninety days. As per the Monterey employee.
Yeah, if you can't cook that, you're not on the fish.
We could just vote yes to the existing one and amend it. That would, then we at least have one.
I'm this close to to, I mean, there's good reason to. There's good reason to. The only reason not to is cumbersome to approve and then immediately start making changes.
I I get that.
I'm this close.
The the flip side is it's been eighteen months and we don't have a.
My question for Mary would be. Well, I have a couple of thoughts on the employee handle. One is anywhere that we have HR director, just put town administrator.
Yeah, and there's a couple, there's a couple of places. Oh, the town administrator.
Because Collins Center doesn't.
Right.
We can use Collins Center as a resource. I see Collins Center as a resource, like town council's a resource.
Right.
Hopefully, they're open to that agreement. So you put town administrator because we know they're going to be in the office, we know they're going to be responsive, and they're willing, they're going to be taking on that responsibility. They then go say to Collins Center, hey, I just got a X Y Z, and get advice on how to handle it. But they are responsible, so I would, I think the transition of having an HR director that was in the office.
Right.
And had email and whatever. Collins Center was very explicit when we hired them. They didn't want to be HR, they wanted to be HR consultant. So I think you put town administrator everywhere that you said HR director. And then the town administrator, as needed, uses Collins Center as a resource as well as town council. So let's say, you know, the worst kind of thing comes in. You, the town administrator hopefully immediately probably notifies the select board and is out with town council and and the Collins Center to figure out how do we respond.
Right.
But they are the point person, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, it absolutely makes sense. It was the only exception being if they're the, you know, I'm sure you wouldn't, but they're the guilty party, in which case.
Select board chair.
Yeah.
I think you could just note that.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think there already is a an annotation of some kind. I can't remember if that.
I think it should definitely at that point still be select board chair as as difficult as the open meeting law is, select board chair is going to have the resources and the level of responsibility.
Yep.
And hopefully the discretion to handle that situation. And also, select board is the direct super judge of the of the.
It it makes a lot of sense.
So. So the way that I have the only amendment from the version that Rogers agreed to that the board has seen would be adding, I'll read the whole sentence, sick days, not taking a sick leave within a fiscal year, maybe carried over from one fiscal year to another, but not more than ninety days.
Not more than ninety days.
Not more than a total accrual of ninety days?
A full of ninety days.
Yeah, because otherwise, I'm not sure what it means.
Because it, yeah, because you don't know if it's a ninety day window or is it a ninety actual day? It's going to have to be a full of ninety days.
Not more than.
Cool.
A cool of ninety days.
So then also, because I could roll over, I could do the roll over the hundred.
Well, yeah, what what I was worried about, the way that without putting a cruel in there, it could sound like it only rolls up for ninety days.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, what, what I was worried about, the way that without putting accrual in there, it could sound like it only rolls, rolls up for ninety days in the next fiscal year. And then it expires or something.
So let's do the same thing here. Vacation days may be carried over from one fiscal year to another, but not more than an accrual of twenty days.
And they're taking a three-month vacation. I find it really hilarious that people think prosecutors get paid themselves. I don't know any that take that. They all might wish it.
Um, the only other thing is. Are there any other comments?
I, I, I read through, I went through it, I'll tell.
Oh, I do have a comment, actually. What, how do we all feel about in the section of term dating it? Dating the signatures, April two, which is today. Dating the term starting April one. Because when you go to do payroll.
Oh, yeah.
It's a clean break.
Yes.
All your accruals will start, and it's actually the beginning of a quarter, April one.
That's very handy.
So I think if we date, obviously, we're signing it and agreeing to it April two, but in the section of term, we can say that the agreement commences and becomes effective on April one.
That's fine with me. I, I, I was seeing this as interim anyway, even though, you know, we had, sort of, you guys voted, at least past two weeks, as interim, they weren't like official or official.
Yeah.
So we appreciate you taking on as soon as possible. I, I think it's a good idea.
Everyone's sending an agreement, okay. Okay, so we'll vote on the town administrator contract um, with the two changes that we've discussed about sick leave accrual year over year and vacation leave accrual year over year, was a wording change, and dating the term the first of April twenty twenty-four to the first of April twenty twenty-six.
Agreed. Second.
So that's a, a second, and are, is there any discussion, questions?
I, I, I'm going to assume that we haven't written a very one-sided contract, you know, not kind of a two-sided contract.
It's very two-sided.
It is very two-sided. I ain't trusting you on that, because.
So. Yep, we'll vote on the motion.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous approval. We don't need to have hard copies right now, but.
I can, um, print it out, have it made for tomorrow, if you want.
Yeah.
Do it tonight, whichever way you want to do it.
I thought it was all printed out and leave them in the box. The, yeah, the other thing I need from you at some point, Roger, is your mailing address, which will get redacted from. Okay. That's big. Fire company lease agreement.
We, we haven't made no progress in the last few weeks, what have we put out, I don't know. Seven, seven lights since, that's my secret. We're gonna talk later in the week on how to perceive. My recommendation is that you put in the budget over fifty thousand dollars for the lease agreement. Um, I think that, you know, when you look at all the numbers, the fire truck compensation and the lease agreement, that, uh, we need to build the lease from the bottom up. There is, I believe, will be a mechanism so that you get the money to do capital improvements. Um, it needs to be fine-tuned and put in writing, but you, I forwarded you the emails from Chris Brown, the lawyer, saying we didn't need to do anything on the warrant to change it.
Yeah, so the, the way that I interpreted that email is there's ninety thousand dollars, three thirty thousand dollar allotments. And the first two, the way that they were voted on in town meeting was just for fire company capital improvement.
Yes, and all of them.
And the third one set contention upon.
The lease agreement.
History there where it's not. I don't know the whole story, but we just want to make sure moving forward.
Yep, and that we don't have to worry about getting hot.
No, no, we don't. And I think that I have no problem. You know, first, what do I tell the accountant in the dress? I have no problem, you know, we need to be out. I don't want to catch them off of our. Off guard, you know, we tell them up front, this is the way it's going to work.
But I, I think it should be doable, so let's.
Okay, I'll start working on that.
Or do we want to do part?
Just for the viewing public. We had a hardware issue.
Oh, okay.
It was a hardware?
Yeah, well, it ran out of memory. It was maxing out on something, so I had to close another program down. So we have enough memory to, to turn on the application.
Well, that laptop is not.
Yeah. I think we need something new there. Anyway, that's what, just, just for the public, just so they know.
It wasn't an operator error.
It wasn't a biomass operator error. It was a hardware issue.
So, we're at, you'll tell me anymore, but it's also 6:30. So Jeff, if you're on the call, let's not keep him forever, let's get into the budget. Jeff, are you there?
I am. I don't know if you really need me, but I'm here, so happy to.
Did he make it for the technical difficulties, Jeff?
I was experiencing your technical difficulties.
Sorry about that.
No worries, I persisted and you came back.
So I think there's kind of a, a short list. Of what is left regarding budget, that I'm just going to run through the list.
Are you going in order on the budget or something?
I just have it in my other order.
What's your other order?
The email that I sent to everyone yesterday. So debt service I'm responsible for and.
I didn't win that lottery.
You heard it there first.
So there's, there's, there's an email out to David Eisenthal and Sarah Hunter, our banker and our treasurer. And I explained that we extended the useful life of the dump truck from five years to 10 years. Which I think is, is more than fair. For a dump truck of that nature, that does imply. That being said, I think we, we are pretty much squared away. I would be very surprised if they come back and say anything differently. So what we have down. We didn't touch the library numbers. Highway truck principal zero. And this, sorry, let me, let me be clear because there is a difference between what we're doing, the operating budget, and what we're doing for free cash. But highway truck principal zero, highway truck interest 5,636.14. Medical rescue vehicle principal zero, medical rescue vehicle interest 5,000. Tannum axle principal 25,000, tannum axle interest 4,672.63. Library loan principal 70,950, library loan interest 32,085.75. That's going to be in the operating budget, and then the additional principal payments coming out of free cash total 92,259.05.
Ninety-three thousand.
Ninety-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine oh five, and I've got to pull up my other spreadsheet to break them down. For the draft, we have the same thing, which would be for the highway truck, 29,642.40. For the medical rescue vehicle, 25,800. For the tannum axle dump truck, 7,766.65. And for the library, 29,050.
Bringing the total to 100,000 for the library.
Principal.
What was the first one, free cash, the first item, the highway truck?
The highway truck, 29,642.40.
Yeah, and let me go over the reasonings behind those. So the reason behind everything we have in the operating budget is because those are the minimum payments, which we're double checking that, that's 100% squared away. The reasoning behind the additional free cash is, is different for the library, because for the library, the 29,000 was just to get it up to 100,000 principal, which is a longstanding informal agreement. That the select board has been holding to for a number of years, and the library trustees are expecting. And then for the other three vehicles, it is a somewhat arbitrary number that was decided, how many years we want to pay down the principal in. So at this rate, we'll pay down the tannum axle in three years, including this year. The medical rescue, medical rescue vehicle, five years, including this year, and the highway truck, four years, including this year. The remaining principal on all of the items after these payments would be highway truck, 8,927.20. Medical rescue vehicle, 103,200. Tannum axle, 65,533.30, and library, 575,000. There's a free cash for May 24 ATM spreadsheet that I prepared, Nikki.
It's not, it's not on the regular budget, huh?
Okay. When we're at town meeting, and we get up to, and Mark is reading all this up, the moderator is reading all these things. When it gets to reading debt service. I think it would be appropriate at that point for the select board to put a hold on it and explain, when we get to answering the holes. Explain what you're doing and why the numbers are here, and in the other places as well, so that they, people clearly understand it then, and not get hit with it later.
I'll do it.
Agreed, I think it's a good idea.
As long as, as long as there's no motion on the floor to raise the library to 100,000 in the operating budget.
As long as we get to 100,000, and I, you know, I don't care if we did, if you don't make it yourself, that's fine.
No, I, I think it's a good idea.
He's saying he's taking all debt services.
I, I think it's a good idea to have that clarity, so that people understand why the two are separated.
Right, I mean, so if it's, and if it's done then, and not afterwards, because people don't like things afterwards.
Well, plus, hopefully, they've looked through it and they noticed it, so they're going to have a question.
Yeah, and they don't only listen to this.
So that, yes, so they have a question anyway, but at least for those who did, it will be answered.
And it's, the, the free cash issue is going to be one article, right, but broken down, isn't that how it is?
Broken down and.
So. In the draft, town meeting. So.
Our computers.
So, the next item is health insurance. Roger and I are working on that. Roger needs to get enrolled into health insurance first, because we're basing it based on what. What we are responsible for, independent of what plan and whatnot, but it's very likely to stay the same or very similar.
Okay. To 1%.
Yes, because it's, it's likely that Roger will have a similar plan to his predecessor.
Yeah, if the, at the most, it would be a couple, at the most. That could be down to a little bit.
So, well, it, we'll still get it finalized, but more likely than not, that number will stay the same, and that gives us.
We have a one, one single plan as the buffer?
Yep. Okay, IT.
Roger, IT, I am. In conversation with John Shannon. But I have a quote for services, and I'll get that started as soon as I can. I've got to look over the contract again, and I'll get the contract for you guys to, to look at and sign as well. And we'll start moving with the services. It's only $2,800 right now, so I was going to have him come in and do a little bit, once we get that signed. And have him come in and do a little bit of investigative work to try and figure out where we are, and look at, look at our network, and look at our computers and move forward.
So are we looking to leave it at the budget at 40 for now?
No, it should be.
It's at 40.
Oh, it should be 20.
Well, we talked about 27 or 28.
27, 5, 28, I think is what it should be brought down to. Something that will, that'll cover us.
So I'm putting 28 in for now.
So, 28,000?
Yes, okay, that, that should be enough.
And then you have what was left over from the town meeting here, you have $10,000 now.
Because 2,800 times 12 is more than 28,000, I'm just saying.
Well, yes, it's 2,800 a year.
2,800 a year?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at right now.
So the rest is for a quote?
Yes.
Okay.
The thing, the thing.
But I'll verify it just to be safe.
The thing, no, but seriously, the thing is essentially, John Shannon is servicing towns that had arrangements and have arrangements, not that different from what Monterey had.
Right, right.
There's two tiers. There's you get John Shannon, or like our old setup, or you pay $3,000.
Not much in there.
Right, so for now, Jeff, do you think the finance committee is opposed to the, to cutting the IT line by $12,000?
Opposed to it? Well, you know, I'm just a citizen here, I can't really speak for the entire finance committee.
But you can tell us how you feel.
I, I was sitting here thinking, wow, this is starting to look better on a number of different levels, when I was thinking back to where we were like a month or two ago. So, well done.
Okay, well, now, well, wait until we get to the.
It really speaks to the work that everyone has put in, especially the select board, and I'll take, you know, a little bit for the finance committee too. And also our new town administrator, to really cut some of the earlier anticipated costs. So I would be surprised if Ms. Marcus has a significant complaint.
Okay, all right, and I'll verify all those numbers too. Yeah, and, and school budget, I did get numbers for, I did get those numbers. I got a letter today, certified letter from Southern Butcher Regional School District. Which breaks down all of our numbers for what they're supposed to be. Would you like me to read?
Please, yeah, so we're looking for three numbers, really, it's capital, operating and transportation, and loan and interest.
Yes, so, so capital, let's see, capital not including bond payment is 42,491.
So very similar last year.
Yes. Capital, which is, the bond project, which is for the roof and boiler project, is 41,461.
41,461.
Yep, so I'm going to read these two separately, they're actually operating, they broke out operating and transportation, and then I'll read the total. So the, the, the individual line item for operating is 1,802,411. Transportation is 111,428, did you mean that, please, slowly, so.
No, I'm waiting for the trouble, because it's only one.
Total operating and transportation is 1,913,839. I think that was actually less than what we had anticipated.
Yeah, about 20K.
Yeah.
The, the schools, the capital, the first capital number was 42,491, did I get that right?
Yes, not included, yes, and the bond project was.
41,461, it was just I wasn't sure about the 91 part.
Yeah, so, so the, the total, the grand total for our FY '25 school budgets, 1,997,790.
1,979?
997.
97,000, how much?
791.
So that brings us down about 20 grand.
For zulus, so do you have the proposed change operating budget at 5.29%?
I didn't enter them because I was nervous about doing it.
Well, so what I'm doing is I'm butchering the whole Excel sheet and all the references, I'm just changing.
So I'm going to, I'm going to try. Yeah, I'm gonna.
So you keep a good copy, but I'm just butchering it because.
Yeah, I get it.
I'm not putting them in the thing back here to track back here, but when we go to make the town meeting warrant, I'll just copy it out of here and just have the right numbers.
Okay, um, and, okay, cool. And I, I'm not going to have the right percentage number, because not only did I not enter that, but we haven't talked about the fire department compensation numbers, and I played with mine, because I wanted to see what it was going to do in the budget, so.
So.
It's close to that, it's like right around there.
But bring it down another 20K, so now we're down like 30K, so that gives us a little.
Well.
Sort of helps something in this side.
Well, before we get into fire, I just want to quickly touch base. Jim said he wanted 5,000.
Another 5,000.
5,000.
For the well testing.
So that is, I believe.
We had, it's 400.
Capital, highway, isn't it?
400, you don't have it, the notes are there, it's the top line.
In highway operations, so it's at 226,400, and it should really be 231,400.
Yep.
Jeff, I know you can't speak on behalf of the finance committee, but I just want to let you know, we're going to add the 5,000 in for the PFAS testing. For the highway department, and then we'll have to obviously run that by the whole, the finance committee next week. I don't.
But we have to do the well testing, so it's not really optional.
Or the finance committee members go to jail.
Right.
And then from the assessors.
He had that.
Don suggested adding a line, I felt like because we put assessors expenses, we put the Mayflower rebau in there last year, we should just keep it in that line. We could even put a hole and explain to people. 141 assessors expenses, it's at 6,411. Don's request assessors to make that 11,411.
So the, and the bump, if I recall correctly, the bump up is because of an increase in prices from Mayflower, which is like, they hadn't increased that price other than the rebuild in quite some time.
Well, I think it's also for additional services, because the way Don was explaining it was. The state is not really training individual assessors to do some of the required work, they would rather train a couple of firms. Than train 350 assessors, which is just kind of unfortunate that that is the way of the world, but I don't know that we can do much to change that.
Okay.
Which just sounds like. So I'm also going to go ahead and do that, Jeff, and obviously, we'll run the whole budget by the finance committee next week, but 141 assessors expenses, it's going up to 11,411. Another question for everyone is town clerk wages.
So I just went to the town clerk page. FY '25 rate, 26 per hour for 10 hours a week, plus 100 extra. So the only question I'm going to throw out there is whether we know we need to bump it up, the number of hours, or do we want to stick with the 12? Given the conversation we just had.
I think we need to bump it up, because I think he's offering, you know, we need some, we're asking him to do a little, change the job description, so he's willing to do other things, and I think. You know, as time goes on, you know, we have those hours we can put in use.
So do we want to bump it up to 15?
I would say 15.
I would say too, one of the things I'm, just to not go too much into detail, but there were expectations that had kind of been set in policy, like. The town minister and the clerk can both post agendas, but that wasn't at all the case in reality, as far as positions and functions and redundancy. So some of it is really, I think we went a little too low with the 10 per week plus 100. Maybe with someone who's been doing the job for decades, or a decade, that might work, but I think, and then there's just so many things, I go on the website. And feel like could get cleaned up. The town meeting warrants being flipped every other page upside down. I don't know why it's so annoying, but it is, because as you read through it, when you're trying to skim through, you don't have the thing you have to, where you have to flip, flip.
Believe me, I know, there was one point at which I was going through every single one, trying to track one of those things down, when we had the zoning bylaw, I was looking for the zoning bylaw, I changed all the way to 2005, so really, there's no convincing.
Well, I just did the same.
I'm right there with you.
I just did the same thing, because Donna looked at the town meeting warrant, and she said, oh, the retiree stabilization fund, did you create one? And I said, well, we've been putting money in this thing.
Just don't let us assume we have.
But really, no, so it's funny.
Where was it?
2006. We never really, at least based on my look at, she said it's sufficient, she said it's sufficient. Um, let me pull up the actual.
How many, how many actual work we have done there, is it 52.2 or something?
I think it's 52.2 in a normal, but it's a, it's a leap year this year, so it's a little bit more. It's like 52.6 or something like that.
Can you?
It's actually, it's actually on a piece of paper and, and it's in there, someone wrote it down.
There's some of those things, there's a little post-it there that's.
Well, hopefully, the past few years.
15 hours a week, 52.2 times 15 is 783 times 26, we did 52.2, that's 20,358. You think it's 52.6?
I can go look and see.
Go look and see if we're changing budget.
I think it depends on each year.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what he just said, because it's not a year and everything. So, but I just, if we're going to change the budget for the clerk, I'd like the right number.
Fair agreement, it should be 15 hours.
Right.
Well, I think it can be averaged, the tricky thing comes, so elections, and I think one of the things you assume when you bump up. Is that more of that can be absorbed into the regular.
Although it's, it's still got that extra 100 hours, so if we're saying 15 plus the extra, you want.
I was going to say 15, because I feel like now we're at 12, but if you want to do 15 plus the 100, that's essentially 17.
It was still under the 19.
Yes, I'm not necessarily.
So you're thinking just bump it up another three hours.
Yeah, it's another.
13 plus the two is 15.
Do, I mean, it depends, there's so much to be done.
I, I think you put it in there, and we make sure that the hours are defined on what you should do. And, you know, we could probably brainstorm a list one time of the things we want to get done.
Yeah, fair, but meanwhile, what are we putting in the budget, 12?
No, we're not putting.
13 plus the 100?
So the question is, let's keep the plus 100, because it's accurate to say there's elections and other stuff.
Yep.
Like town meeting, special town meeting. So if we say, my thought when you said 15 was you were saying 13 plus 100, but you were saying 15 plus 100.
I'm happy to go to 13.
I'm fine to go to 15 plus 100 too.
15 plus 100.
All right, 15 plus 100, I'm just taking notes here.
I don't think you got, we have to manage the hours.
Right, so, let's see, so 15 times 52.4. Plus 100 times 26 is 23036. Would be the requested. 23036. So that's a 20% change.
Is that with COLA too?
That was a total change, the, yeah, the rate, the rate of 26 per hour, it's got to include that, that FY '20 rate, FY '25 would include the COLA change.
Well, oh, you know why it comes out so even, because 25, 4%, 25 is a dollar. Is it?
Uh, no.
Yeah.
Four times.
25, 10% would be 250, right, so. That, that is very tiny.
Because I was like, yep.
Sometimes these raises just are ridiculous.
Sometimes you got to be afraid to round numbers, I'll like, why is it?
There should be pennies there.
There, there's, that's too easy.
Something is wrong.
Just, I just double checked, I ran the numbers a second time, and got the same number, 23036.
15 hours per week plus 100 extra hours. 23036, so Jeff, it's not subtracting money, but I just want to let you know, the select board is proposing. To raise a town clerk's hours from 10 hours a week plus 100 throughout the year, to 15 hours a week plus 100 throughout the year. Which bumps line 160 town clerk wages to 23,036 dollars.
I hear you, I got that. I didn't write all that down, but we'll go over that when we meet next week again, if Eileen has any questions.
Yeah, and I think the gist of it is reorganization during transition, and kind of also trying to. Uh, tidy up and organize backlog of years. Because our sense from talking to the town clerk earlier is that 10 hours a week plus 100 is enough to keep your head above water, but it's not enough to keep things organized. And, and go back and organize.
Or do the additional.
Do the additional.
And I've taken a, a couple of just brief notes on the different items that you've mentioned, Justin, in this part of the call, this part of the meeting, and I will forward that to Eileen. For informational purposes, not for deliberation, of course, respecting OML, but just to report to her what I heard. She'll have a little head start before she walks into the meeting in terms of what she might have more questions about.
Yeah, and I can talk to Jay further too. Hi, Michael, thank you for joining us.
Sure.
We'll, we'll, we'll be there in a minute, no problem. Sorry, I missed, I lost my email that I was. So there's the two fire things, which I, I have to accuse myself, we have direct family involved, but was there anything else before that?
No.
Do you guys need me for anything else tonight?
You might want to hear this one, the office assistant.
Yeah.
So I, I'm like, I don't know whether to bring that up now, because we want to, like, we're talking about potentially more hours to cover. I mean, you know that I longstanding think that we should have a second, a second person in the office, right? I just think it's smart, most of towns are doing it, we've got money budgeted, I think we need to go ahead and make some decisions about what we want from that person in advertising. And hire someone, even if we end up changing part of their job description, I just want to put out there, like, are we, this is the budget we'll have to stick with for the next year. Are we comfortable with the number of hours it will cover for that position?
What, how many hours?
It was 14, wasn't it, it was eight and six.
But at a low rate.
Yeah.
Probably to really higher, we probably want to raise the rate.
Office assistant wages is set at 13,155, and where would it be at, the general government?
It is.
13,155, but I just want to go to the general government and find out what the sound.
Butchering the number, like, this is, the one thing that I'm doing is not referencing those other sheets.
Gotcha, so I'm going over here to look at. Shares human resources, town administrator grant writer, office assistant expenses. Select Board grant writers, town administrator salary, what I'm not finding is.
Look at select board secretary right there.
Yeah, that's under select.
Office assistant wages are 120 above.
$18 an hour for up to five hours a week, but there was a second one.
Yeah, it's under select board secretary.
It just says what I just said, 18 hours, $18 an hour for up to five hours a week, was the only thing that was under select.
Wait, office assistant, very top, yeah, so it was, it was the line.
And office assistant is up to nine hours at 18 hours a dollars an hour.
So it was up to 14, 14 hours at 18 bucks an hour.
Uh, includes four hours for meetings and five for admin for planning board, is what the comment is.
My thought is that we need to. Roger is getting a feel for things, but probably in a, in another few weeks. Don't want to put it off too long, but we'll actually have a better sense of. Is it bills, is it minutes, is it, what is it that most could? You, like, what does Roger want to do, and what does he want to delegate?
Yeah, well, we don't, Roger, I mean, keeping him on the real simple task, that's not where it's.
Yeah, it's a mixture of things, it's, it's not only what, what I want to do, but it's what the select board needs to get done. So there are things that, you know, what, what those things are, I think that's all part of something. I think that's all part of something a little bit higher than, than some of the administrative tasks that are, that are taking place right now. Just, cause I'm just trying to figure it out, that's all.
So it's expected, it's taking like three times as long, because you're figuring out, creating a new password.
Yes. Yeah.
Breaking into the boxes. Finding the keys.
Like, how the heck do I, where are the heck are the pencils?
So.
You know.
So it's taking three times as long, but even when it's taking a third of the time, um, that being said, I don't think we need to have a, uh, down to the bullet point of exactly what an office assistant is going to do, and it has to probably to some degree be fluid. The thirteen thousand, it'd be nice to see a higher, because it's really hard to hire in this environment.
I, I really think it is, I think we should be.
Yeah, I think you gotta be north of twenty dollars.
I, 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 the very least, I think we have to bump it up to twenty if we really wanna hire someone. Um, so do we wanna say we're gonna raise that to, leave it at fourteen hours and go up to twenty dollars an hour? Because I'm just, we're gonna need to, for one thing, we don't have anyone writing it right now.
I would go to twenty-two.
I would go to twenty-two.
Twenty-two, alright.
Twenty-two fourteen.
I would go to twenty-two fourteen, and I think that could go very far.
I also have, uh, I found a few notes that were written by another department member, another department that had administrative tasks that could also.
Well, the build art of it, yeah, the building.
So, and there, I think in even Chris, a little bit, I know Chris has, gets help from his, um, election workers and stuff, but there may be small things around there.
Well, one thing is gonna be, there's departments, like highway department has a lot of bills and paperwork.
The fire department, I mean, Melissa was doing bills for the fire department.
Yeah.
And stuff like that, and you're not gonna be everywhere in this.
But you know, it's interesting, it's just even just having a basic encounter, I've noticed that's a big thing, because people come in, they come in with their, their, the bill that they wanna give to Mari, and it's just about saying hello. And even if there's a person there, says hello, takes their check and walks over and puts it in the box for tax collector and spends five minutes having a conversation, it really pays off, I think, to have that person there. And it, not that I don't mind doing it, but it's just, yeah, I get up and you gotta say something.
You have to jump their car.
You have to jump their car, which I tried to do the other day, which didn't work.
Yeah.
No.
Doesn't he really change his job description?
It's like an electric vehicle.
Oh, what the heck?
It's a motor tractor.
Was it like a electric?
Yeah, I could, yeah, it was a, it was a Toyota hybrid, and it just died, and I did.
I had to jump on the other one.
Yeah, and it had this little.
Airport parking lot.
Yeah, it had this little weird battery in it.
It's in the trunk.
You don't want it to explode?
Yeah, I couldn't even connect my jumper, jumper cables to it.
Yeah, I did, I had long jump.
Okay, so the, it's sixteen one thirty-nine twenty, do we wanna make it sixteen one forty? I'm just trying to do away with this.
No, because that's hard to figure out how we calculate the number.
Okay.
And that's fourteen hours at twenty-two?
That is fourteen hours at twenty-two for fifty-two point four weeks.
Which is because it's a leap year.
Right, so sixteen one thirty-nine twenty.
What would it be if it wasn't a twenty-two year, it's a normal, what would it be normally?
But the leap year was this year, I thought.
It is, so this is what's really weird, we're figuring out this year's, like, this has been, it's past the leap year, isn't it?
Yeah, the leap year was, we had twenty-nine days.
The, the year was in February.
Yeah.
You know what, did you, did we look on the internet like twenty twenty-four, how many weeks?
To, it's the fiscal year twenty, cause it's, if we have to do the fiscal year, so.
Fiscal year twenty-five, twelve, but you know what?
Oh, yeah.
This all is continued upon higher teller's position and X, Y, Z, so let's not get.
Right, so you want me to recount it with fifty-two point two?
No. So just remind me, it's fourteen hours at twenty-two per hour.
Fourteen hours at twenty-two dollars per hour.
At fifty-two point two.
Fifty-two point four weeks.
And that was the same, we use fifty point four weeks.
Correct. But I'd rather have a few extra cents than not have enough.
Make that sixteen one forty, just to.
I said no, because I can't figure out how we calculate, and he's right.
I have a notebook, you know, that can.
I hate that, I think, I was gonna suggest we round to the nearest dollar for a bunch of the salaries, it's driving me nuts with this thing.
Okay, um.
Okay.
We have, so are there any other things other than fire which we can get into?
The only weird thing, I think it's, and I, I think that the numbers are backwards for fire department comp, calc. In, um, and I know, I know it's about the fire department and.
But you're just talking about them.
I'm just talking about the numbers.
Which number am I?
I have a feeling that the numbers for training, so if you go to.
Oh, on that actual, right.
Yeah. Yeah, I think they're backwards. I think they're.
What line, what line are you talking?
Uh, I'm on, well, I'm in, I'm on the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
So the spreadsheet, um, factors in to all the other different line items.
Oh, okay, I see, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
So I'm looking at the spreadsheet, and in the calculations, I believe the training budget, that the training rate is forty, and the call rate is fifty, and it's backwards. So if we change the forty to fifty, it's gonna increase the budget item.
It's gonna change a bunch of stuff, but why don't we check that before we mess with it? Because I'm, I, I'm not sure about that.
I'll, I'll, I can double check.
Okay, we're, uh.
I can't, on, on the.
No, you can't.
Matter, but the, as a matter of fact, and it's been this way for probably twenty years, fire calls are fifty.
Yeah.
And fire trains are forty.
So it's backwards.
I'm gonna go to view disruption.
Okay.
So for, for example, if, in, in the spreadsheet right now, um, based upon the training, it's got twelve days of training at fifty dollars with twenty staff, and a hundred and sixty-five days of calls, forty dollars with six staff, and we've, the, the gross dollar value for the whole fire department comp is two thirty-four, two-ten. And if you switch those numbers around and put the forty dollars for training.
And fifty dollars for.
And the fifty dollars for, for the call, it changes the gross dollar value to two fifty-one.
Versus two thirty-four?
Uh, six, ten, versus two thirty-four, two-ten.
Yeah, it turns it up.
So that would, that's actually a difference of two fifty-one.
So, so we're talking li, on the spreadsheet, it's like C six, the one that's labeled like duty chief and it says forty, it should be fifty. And the one, and also C eight, and then training should be forty, C nine instead of fifty?
Yes.
And, uh, and what about the C ten? So all the ones that say forty should say fifty, and the one that says fifty should say forty?
And the one that says fifty, I believe, I believe that's what the, what the recommendation was.
I think I, you know, Justin said that, and I think I heard that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I just want, let, let me just double check really quick on those, I'm pretty certain the, the weekend duty shifts and the weekday were fifty, but let me just double check them.
That's it, because the shift rate is the one twenty-five.
Yes.
Right.
It was a hundred, he wants to take it to a hundred and twenty-five?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But that's been the case since the first.
So also.
Yeah.
That, that, of all the things that changed, that never changed, because they haven't had an increase.
So if we change those, if we change those two to fit, those, the weekend duty, the weekend duty chief to fifty, and the evening duty chief to fifty, it raises the gross to two fifty-six, three hundred. So from the original, from the original, what was on this spreadsheet, from the original, which was two thirty-four.
Right. Wow, how did that, that mistake nearly, uh?
I, I just realized it today.
Jeez.
I just realized it today, and I'll tell you why in just a second. That's a difference of twenty-two thousand and ninety dollars. I realized it today because I was actually going through and verifying the payroll, and I just, I, I saw that.
And.
I was like, boy, that doesn't make any sense, something's weird here, and so I, you know, I went, uh, I saw Justin, I asked him, and he said that, yes, it was the way that it was, and that's when I realized it was backwards here, that big dollar value was backwards, so.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, it's like taking it up a hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah, it raised it, it raised that value up twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, but if you take it up to.
Fortunately, we also had other things that lowered, so we're in at zero more or less, but.
Basically, what we thought we were gaining, we lost.
Yeah, we lost back, I know, right?
Yeah, it's actually.
There, there are any count, capital model of that, you know, doing it.
So you're right, it's, it's a ninety-seven percent.
The only thing that changed was the evening shift, the other rates didn't change, cause they've been fifty. And the training rate was forty, so those didn't change, actually. Right, there's not, there's no increase to them. It's just they were integral.
Are there any changes that I should make in?
Well, yeah, cause it ends up, if, if the, the, um, so it, it turns out that the in the fire department calculation, uh, compensation, the, the shift rate, it's shift rate, it's not really shift rate, right? These three things were in there as forty and the training as fifty, but it was wrong, right? It was put in the spreadsheet wrong, so those three things are fifty, not forty, and the thing that was fifty is forty, which ends up being an extra, what? Thirty-six.
Twenty, twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand dollars, but that's not the, and this is because of that.
That's actually two fifty-six.
I, I think those increases, I, I think the increases that were there for the shift rates, the weekends and evening shift rates were, are increased, cause it was a hundred and it was forty.
Right.
They had decided, it was decided in conversation, make one twenty-five and fifty.
Oh, okay, so the fifty was an increase?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, it was a hundred. Talking about the training to, from forty to.
No, no, there, there was, uh, there was, um, the, the training had gone down, cause they, they actually were looking for more, but it went back to forty.
Forty, okay.
So that, that's my understanding, is it?
But the fifty's an increase from forty?
Yeah.
Okay.
As is, cause the, the one twenty-five is an increase from one hundred.
That I knew, but I wasn't sure about the fifties.
Fifty, it was an increase as well.
Right, um, so, and then the difference is that, uh, there's another twenty in there that's from the, um, retention longevity stipend thing. And that we do need to talk about, but.
Is that the department of highway?
No, no, that's still fire department, but do we wanna deal with Michael first, so he doesn't have to wait?
Yeah, let's do that. Okay.
I, I saw it, it was a while ago.
Wow. Well done.
Sign off, so have a good evening.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, Lady Garfield Tax District.
Guess you have the, the both lawyers' comments?
Didn't you just send me?
Yeah, did I send you the PDF? Did you see the comment? I, I didn't know if your lawyer sent it.
I got an email at five forty-eight.
You didn't get anything from your lawyer?
Yeah, we, we do, do you have, you received?
Is it the same thing that I have?
I know, probably, yeah.
Okay.
Did, the one that I sent you a few days ago?
No, um, this, I believe was Brewer had comments and then Elizabeth Goodman answered the questions.
Ah, that's, I haven't seen Elizabeth Goodman, I haven't had that.
There are a few of them, so we can just go through.
Okay.
Yeah, can you just forward that to us, man, can you?
Okay. Nice.
Oh, Michael, I have an email from you that says comments from town council, Elizabeth Goodman, but the, the attachment didn't.
Attached.
Oh, okay.
For whatever reason.
Okay, I can just.
This is the first time.
Uh, this is a PDF, cause sometimes on devices, you don't see the comment if you're in Word or.
Yeah, 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 fair.
So, I'll send it to.
He sent it to Aden.
Send it to private.
And Susan.
And Susan.
Yep.
Aden.
Admin. Susan, right, admin, yeah.
It looks like Melissa. It's the name, it's the name I have in here, huh? But you never know.
It was, it was admin, I, you know.
I know. I just had her in my.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have, but anyway, um.
So.
So I can just read.
What's the gist of it?
I don't think there's anything that important, I think, but we should read it so we know what we want.
Right, so the first one, the first Donna comment I have was, um, suggesting a map.
Let's get back to the.
It's in section one B.
Oh, yeah, so that was, let me just get back to it.
Sure. Since the parcels include ones with easement access, the specific parcels have not been identified. They were, if required, we could refer to the assessor's maps that shows parcels that abut the lake. Do you want that reference added, although it will not conclusively show all property in the district?
Oh, is that what the?
Do, are you opening up a dis?
Yup.
Okay, so I have to find it again, but, but basically, it, it, a lot of the, the first comments have to do with the easement properties. So everyone's familiar with the easement properties.
Yeah, so you, you don't live, your property that you live on doesn't abut the lake, but you have an easement to get in your deed.
Yeah, and then there's a property that the easement is on, so, for instance, I own, and, and at one time, they were owned by Schwab, who owned that whole thing, and he owned, you know, the well system and these easements. He made the easement so he could sell houses off the lake, but give them rights to come to the lake, so it was like a marketing thing, right? But then when he left, he put them up for sale, and so private people bought them, and then, you know, there's been issues with things, but anyway. So it's not clear what you can or cannot do with your easement, but those people had them in their deed, and it gives them the right, the language is usually, you have the right to bathe, um, picnic, and gain access to the lake. So beyond that, you have the right to keep your boat there, does the person who owns the easement have the right to put properties on it? Anyway, I'm getting on topic, but those are the easement properties. So now they're owned by private people, like I own one next to my house, as far as I know, there's four or five people who have it, but there's no way to know who has easement unless they come forward and tell me. So the town, I think, does not have a record of that, that's why.
Well, if it's in the deeds, are the deeds not accessible?
No, no, you'd have to go through every single deed, I don't think anyone would want to do that, right?
And you'd have to go to the registry of deeds.
Yeah.
But is that not what you would do?
Well, if someone.
When you figure out who owes taxes to the district, what else would you do other than go through the deeds?
Well, that's, that's a good point, so they, if they have easement, their taxes are going up, so this would be something to ask the assessor.
So, so the act, so, just to put this in context a little bit, this is deciding who is in the district. The actual district boundaries shall include the land within the town on rate, in which parcels either, one, abut directly on the shoreline of Lake Garfield, or two, have a recorded private right of access to land on the shoreline of Lake Garfield that affords a proprietor with access to Lake Garfield for swimming, boating, or other lake recreational activities at a location where members of the general public may lawfully be excluded from such use. All property owned by the town is excluded from the district. So. Hubei Wood Circle, I think everyone on Hubei Wood Circle has a place they can go down to the lake.
That, that would be in.
All of their properties would be part of the tax district.
Yeah, I don't know too much about the Hope, Hopey people, but I definitely know the people that were in the Schwab sub-development, because I've looked at the deed, so I know what they say. Um, and then there's the, um, the beach across the way.
Lad's Beach.
Lad's Beach, those people have.
Are they deed it?
Yeah. Same sort of thing, so, but I think, I thought what you're getting at is the current taxes, the, the tax assessor has been increasing the property, those val, the value of those properties based on them having access to the lake.
Well, no, not really, there's a modifier.
Okay.
Let's be clear though, because he doesn't just say, okay, we up the property, I think there's a modifier, it's a formula.
I agree with you. Yeah, it's, yeah, right, but basically, you're not, I have to tell people on the lake this all the time, like, you're not, you're not being taxed extra because you're on the lake, you're being, your tax, your taxes are higher, you're paying the same tax rate as everyone else, but you pay more taxes than someone with an acre here, an acre on the lake, cause it's more valuable.
Well.
So however you wanna call it.
We have to be really careful, but I would talk to Don Claus, because you're not paying the same as everyone else, because we actually have one tax rate, but we have six different districts, M one, M two, M three. When you live on the lake, you automatically get a V two, which is a view, which you might get if you live on Bear Town Mountain Road or Mount Hunger, and you have a nice view, if you're on the lake, you automatically get V two, and there's an additional adjustment for feet of lake fronting.
Yes, right.
It's so complicated to.
But it essentially.
Generalize it.
Purpose of it is to, you're getting a fair valuation of what your property is worth, because you pay for view, you pay for lakefront. That same footage wouldn't be the same value if it was on a stream or something else like that. So the intention of it, and I think it, it is fair in the way it works, is you're being, if, if they're saying your house is worth a million dollars, it's because it's worth a million dollars, let's just put it that way.
Well, the house is entirely separate.
No, I'm not saying that the house, the property, right?
The property in that place.
Yeah.
It's worth a different thing than that property in another place.
So in other words, if you look at what the town assesses the property for on the lake, it's fair market value. So that's why I say it, the way I say it, even though technically what you're saying is correct. But people need to understand, they're not paying more taxes than what the value of their their property is. They're paying what the property is worth.
They're paying only basically the fair market value of their property.
Their property is being assessed based on the formulas in the assessor's office.
But it works out and the purpose of it is to pay fair market value. So I'm not, I'm not paying more.
Whether it does that, I can't tell you, but it's.
Well, they can see what the house is sold for, and that's what they sell for very.
So all that being said, I think it's very important that if this goes forward, if you have a deed in, it it says right in here, if you have a deed in, or if you have a recorded private right of access to land on the shoreline of Lake Garfield, that you are part of the district and you pay into it, right?
It always had, that was the intention.
And at the end of the day, the only way to be certain of that would be to go through everybody's deeds, but and you may miss some, and that's why there's this, there's this thing in there later talking about somebody who didn't get.
Didn't get it.
How many properties is it? How how many properties?
That have the deed in right?
Yeah.
We don't know.
How how many properties are we at least looking at?
On the lakefront, there's, uh, what, a hundred and twenty or forty something?
You know what, I don't know, but I would say that probably all said and done, you're probably talking about between one hundred and two hundred is a very safest.
Yeah, right, that's for a lakefront, and then the deed in right people, I'd say maybe fifty.
Hubei Wood Circle, if it's true, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but if it's true that everyone in Hubei Wood Circle has access to that, that's what, ten or fifteen?
Yeah.
And then Lad's Beach is probably another fifteen or twenty.
Right.
And your, you ever notice another fire town?
Then, uh, what's his name, um, Chase, that thing he built there. It's all those houses behind him, so that's probably ten houses.
On Huron Pond?
No, no, not on, this is on Lake Garfield. This is, you know where Chase, the team lives on Sullivan?
Yeah.
And so he's off the lake, he bought that access right way. But all those people that live off the lake behind, behind there.
Yeah.
Also have deed in rights to his property.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
So.
And then, and then there's one, just before you go on the channel, um, I think, what's his name?
Line Mark Road?
Yeah, what's his name, uh, the guy with the compost, uh, Milky? I think he told me he bought that.
I don't know.
That's an accessory.
What does bother me a little bit is that we don't know these things.
It'd be hard to know, because how would you find out?
Well, we have to know, if you're talking about people paying money, we should know.
So it it seems like there's several different ways to go about it, one is.
Well, first, that's the assessor, he might have.
Right, I I, we could also, if this goes forward, we could, you know, make sure to put something either in the Eagle or the Monterey News or whatever and send one out when maybe in one of the tax bill cycles saying, um, if you have an easement to the lake, to Lake Garfield, uh, please notify the newly.
Why do they want to do that?
Well, why do they want, be- because, yeah, they're gonna be taxed, but they also don't have voting rights if they're not part of it. Why would I not?
I, I think we can't, we can't rely on it.
Right.
My first question is, what are the Lake Buell? Okay, so let's research that, we don't need to.
That's a long, long time ago.
We don't need to speculate on it right now, but, or Elizabeth Goodman, or Donna Brewer, or Lake Buell, what's done, because we are not the only people facing this, right? So there's gotta be, and maybe it's going through the deeds.
I can't, or Kyle.
I was gonna say, someone probably knows, you know, because it was only in the East, it's not like it was back in the dawn of time.
I guess, Don first, but he made this up on this.
And so then, and then Donna's point.
But personally, I don't have one that has access.
Donna's point is the specific parcels should be shown, and I think we shouldn't do that because
There's too much.
We shouldn't do that.
And they might change.
Well, there's not a known in the sense that it's clear who's included, if you have, you know, if you meet the these two definitions, you're in the text.
Right, so I don't think it changes this document.
The logistics of how we figure that out and get a.
In the future.
List is, yeah, is a future question.
That's in the future. But what doesn't change this document?
If you go down to the next comment on the next page, it's about the Lake Buell district powers and eminent domain, and Elizabeth Goodman replied, due to concerns about, with the public about passage of the act, who has felt that the power of eminent domain should not be included.
I will also say that I took the time to read through the Lake Buell one, and I could not find eminent domain in there. I mean, now, I may have missed it, but because it's a lengthy document.
Did you hear what?
Well, it might not have said eminent domain.
You can't, you know, where this is because it's formatted.
I remember when I read it, it did say something about basically how you can seize the property, um, if they don't pay their taxes, and that's what this is about.
But that's different than eminent domain, that's different than eminent domain.
Oh, okay.
So tax seizure is different than.
Oh, okay, so what's this?
Well, we'll disregard.
I think why she made.
If, if, if we're not worried about it, we're just gonna disregard the comment about the power thing, if I, and we'll move.
I think she's trying to mean that, but what?
Move to section seven?
Yeah. I agree, but we can ignore that.
And it's about the number of people required to.
I thought that was very reasonable.
Hold a special meeting.
Yeah, they just decreased the number and, um, and Elizabeth altered the document to say that, so they have a hundred, it's now ten.
Wait, oh, I see, okay.
Oh, a hundred with, uh, request on writing of a hundred registered voters who are required for.
So this is like, it's, it's somewhat like calling a special town meeting.
But a hundred registered voters residing in the district, if there's only approximately a hundred properties, that's a very high bar.
Well, twenty percent of, but, or twenty percent of the total number of registered voters residing within the district.
Yeah.
So like, so when you call, when you talk about calling a special town meeting by citizen petition, I think it's something like two hundred or twenty percent.
Right, okay.
So the point being, when you're in a small town like Monterey, your twenty percent or your ten percent is gonna be what it go off of.
I don't know whether it's a hundred percent, ten about changed to a hundred, but then in her comment, she says fifty.
Wait, what?
So we can make whatever we want in it.
Where's the fifty?
Uh, in her comment, in the white.
Yeah, she did.
Or ten percent, because she tried to lower it, so, because the whole issue was, should we lower it to make it easier for people to do, but fine with that, I mean, I think it's reasonable.
I think fifty registered.
Right.
Well, twenty percent, let's say very roughly, twenty percent out of two hundred is forty.
Right, but it's about the same.
So it's about the same, so we could just say fifty or twenty percent.
Yeah.
Okay.
And she had fifty or ten percent.
Yeah, but we all agree ten is too, too few.
You think it's too low?
To call a special meeting? No, no, ten actual people.
Oh, right, yeah, no, ten is too few.
Special meeting, yeah.
Why, I don't think it, is there special needs or just to put things on the annual?
No, to call a special meeting.
Special district meeting.
Okay.
Special district.
It's about calling a special.
Every special. Annual warrant.
You're taking the notes.
On all subjects, the insertion of which.
Ten, ten people can add a war- an article to the annual meeting warrant, just like an annual town meeting.
Okay. Right.
But it's about calling a special.
Okay.
Which is a higher bar.
Yes.
It's a bigger thing.
Okay, I agree.
So the next ones are in section twenty-one, and there's a lot of comments.
Yeah. So there's the red line additions, which I'm assuming was from, is that her name?
Yeah. I think it's G E C is probably putting in Elizabeth.
Right. Yeah, so.
This has to do with what we were saying, is there.
Okay, after the petition was, for exclusion was granted, right, so if you want to get in after that, you're gonna have to owe your back.
Yeah, right, that's how that, if you want to, first, they have to be allowed to have an exclusion, they automatically.
I did think, though, there was, you know, if it was that one or later on, but something read that if if later on you you came, you could go twenty years of assessment, and that didn't seem right.
Yeah, that, it was that.
Yeah.
And the one thing that struck me was like, I was thinking if someone didn't realize that this happened, like, we're saying already that it's actually not that easy to identify the people with easements.
Right, that's why.
So that, with the exclusion, it makes more sense, so if they asked to be excluded and they were allowed to be excluded, and then they decide they want in.
That's the only thing.
Then they're gonna have to pay the back taxes, but if they were excluded because nobody knew.
Right, yeah.
Then they were not, then, then they don't, that would apply, which, so I like the way it's.
I think that's clear.
Yeah. Proprietary rights.
Rights to access, so that was just, I think, misunderstanding.
I think that's, yeah, because proprietary rights is pretty clear.
Yeah. I believe exemptions are distinct from exclusion, not a different process, I don't really understand that. This language is in any other district.
Okay, so it's exclusion versus exemption from taxation. Donna read that as exemption from taxation and and Elizabeth is saying, no, it's exclusion
Yeah.
from the district.
Right, yeah. She said they should have to give a right to access their available, you know, public. Property owner is entitled to a hearing, not just a public meeting.
And it clearly says hearing, so I feel like that is.
Right.
The last one is.
So the property doesn't tax, not itself, no, that's clear.
All right, so basically, the only thing that changed in session twenty-one is the additional Elizabeth made after petition for exclusion was granted, which I think solves the problem.
Right. Yeah, only one, one quick question, it says that the act then takes effect immediately?
Yeah, so I would go with that, Michael, because the act does lay out the process of this is what will happen if the act passes town meeting, and this is the process, so when it says it takes effect immediately, it still has to go through all those steps.
Right.
But you can begin taking those steps.
Okay, that's fine, I mean, they didn't have a problem with this, so I did.
Um, so the changes, as I understand them, are section one, we're not doing anything. Section three, we're not doing anything. Section seven will go with fifty registered voters residing in the district or twenty percent
Yeah.
to call a special meeting.
Yeah.
And then in twenty-one, it's just that added wording after petition for exclusion was granted.
Right.
Okay, that's good.
It's.
I guess we don't really need to find out the access things before the meeting and let's see if the.
Um, it would be really good to, though.
Oh, people might ask.
And it would be really good to know.
Yeah.
Because the first thing we should do is figure out the ones that we actually know, so you're saying you have a neighbor that I, that we know, who has who has a property that has easements to a number of other properties, let's just figure out if we can, how many? And let's figure out if everyone in Hubei Wood Circle has an easement down at the Hubei Wood Circle property, and how many is that?
Right. Unfortunately, you know, you would think the deed to property I had would have had, who had access to it?
And you've been over with that with lawyers, you know what, that whole thing is a mess, though.
Yeah.
Because the well.
Yeah.
That you all get your.
Yeah, water problem, even a bigger mess.
Yeah.
I mean, at the very, at the very least, it's worth asking Don, because
Yeah.
he, he's at least gonna know some of them.
Don Lawson?
Yes.
I don't know, do you get assessed based on easements?
I don't know, but he.
I think he told me that at one point, but then he also said something like the.
I'm gonna. But even so, he may know the properties that have easements, even if it's not, you know what I'm saying, he actually has the information, it's not necessarily.
But there's a lot of people in the Lake District who are not on the lake. So this is not inclusive, and they may not have access.
Right.
So.
But then they wouldn't be in the Lake District.
Right, right, but but they're in the town district.
You have to either, the way this is written, you either need to have property on the shoreline of Lake Garfield or have an easement to it.
Right, right.
And if it's not that, then you're not in the Lake District.
Right.
And I think that the way the.
Except they are the Lake, what I'm saying is, people might get confused because the town of Monterey has a Lake District, which includes people that are not on the lake.
For assessing purposes?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we're not using that.
Right, I understand, but.
We're on the same page, but we need to be.
But he may, but he's saying other people may not be.
A hundred percent, but I think to go into town meeting and explain to people on the floor of town meeting, we need to really, really, really know what's going on.
Yeah.
Because if we're a little bit confused.
A math might be helpful.
If we can identify what properties that it would be on it, that would be really good.
Yeah.
How hard would it be to figure out all the easements? I guess there's probably a lot in the different neighborhoods.
I bet you there's a lot of people who don't know they have.
Sometimes, sometimes they show up, sometimes they do show up on assessor's maps, but that's only if whoever they they were using the deed to, uh, to create the assessor map.
That's why I think Don, I I just vaguely think that Don, like, no.
Okay. Because that's pretty important, because we can't be voting on something and tell people we don't know if you'd be in it or not.
Yeah. I mean, I've had people show up and they go like, oh, you know, I have access, this access way, my access way, I have access to, I go, three years long.
The zoning rule says that you're in the lake shore district from a zoning perspective, if you fall within two hundred and sixty feet of the mean high water level of Lake Buell. So it escapes the guard. So it is conceivable that you could be within two hundred and sixty feet and not actually have frontage.
Oh, I'm sure, there's a lot.
No, there's a lot, that's why I was making that point. And some of the people that have access are not even necessarily close to the lake.
Right.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Someone down on, I think they were down on Bear Town, they told me they had access.
Yeah. They had an easement.
They bought an easement, or they had their, they have an easement on someone else's.
My, yeah, on my, on my easement.
Right.
So they had, they were coming with a canoe and stuff, and.
Does, does that settle that for now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So great, okay.
Um, not to jump, yeah, thank you, Michael.
Thank you for talking.
Okay. That looks good.
Yeah.
Uh, not to jump around too much, but I think we're at fire top.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. This, that. Um, so having had, um, a conversation with the fire chief about the compensation, and I didn't know about the forty-fifty error, because that's not even their fault, that was just on there, but I was assuming those numbers were correct as previously written. Our conversation mostly focused on what to do about the stipend issue for the the officers that are doing a lot of the additional work, um, rather than just work on calls, and um, the proposal we, we came forward with from that was to, uh, using the stipend system and doing ten K for each of the captains and, and this is, I said, like, we're just putting this on the table for discussion, twenty K for the assistant chief and twenty-five for the chief. And I, I was clear that I couldn't by any means guarantee that those numbers would go forward, but, um, so those numbers, I'm putting out there, and then we have to decide what we feel comfortable doing. I, I was feeling a lot happier before I realized that there was an additional twenty K and the other thing.
Well, using the stipends to pay them the salary, should we run that by legal?
Um, I believe we already have, and that it's acceptable. We, there are a lot of people that actually gets, I mean, technically, ours are stipends.
Well, that's true, yeah.
Yeah, you just divide it, or you get paid monthly, is that how it works?
We do get paid monthly, not all stipends work that way, um, I think there are some.
You lump some.
Yeah, that can lump some, I, I don't, and I, I don't know if they care which way it's delivered, and we could certainly ask both council and the and the accountant, what system is better? I, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, but I would like to hear what they think is, I mean, it's better for us in a way to pay it over time, right?
Yeah, I just it's, it's kind of, I don't know, I don't know enough about stipends, I think we should run it by someone.
I don't have any problem.
No, I, I would run it by that just to make closer to our eyes.
Okay, so I think, I think both council and the accountant, would you agree with that? If we're gonna get opinions, then we should get opinions from both.
Yeah, I would get opinions from both.
So, but, okay, so stipend, so get opinion of council and accountants, um, but I also.
But I, I guess, you know, particularly, you, you know, at the captain and the, and what's Chris's job title?
Assistant chief.
Chief, assistant chief. When you're starting talking about the money, what's their job description? What are your expectations for twenty-five thousand dollars a year?
That's a reasonable question.
I know, I, I think, I, I'm not, look, you and I talked a while back, I'm not opposed paying them, but with that kind of money comes something that says.
What, what are the responsibilities for those roles?
It's, it's a job, it's twenty-five grand a year. What are the job descriptions? His, his view of the job description might be a lot different than mine.
That's true, um.
No, I mean, there's.
And I have a better sense of the number of hours involved for the chief, because he and I talked about that, but the reality of, um, I mean, we also know that really what we're talking about is the number of daytime calls that are being answered. And just, I don't know if you were partying to this previously, Mickey, but to give you some sense with the, I'm trying to remember what the number of calls that were daytime calls, it was like a hundred and forty, if you figure, I did a rough calculation, that if you figured only two hours to do response, by the time you leave your work, answer the call, go to the call, and get back, two hours might be an underestimate for many of the calls, the number, if you answered eighty calls, that's basically, it adds up to an entire month's work of workouts. And that's the number of calls that the four people we're talking about are answering.
Yeah, but, but we've also talked about how with some of the people in the highway department are, you know, are gonna, or have the ability to help out.
They have, but the question is, like, is whether that actually ends up going to effect, what we do know is that those four people are the ones that have been doing it.
I know, I'm not.
And I totally agree with you that we need to have some sort of record keeping system for it, but at the same time, I feel like that's an enormous burden, that is, like, back when there were ten calls a year or twelve calls a year, it wasn't that big an ask, but this is way past that.
I, I, I don't, I, I think, I don't dispute what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, if you're gonna give them money, you know, there's gotta be some, what are the policies, what are the job description, what, are we giving these two guys this just to answer the day calls, or we paying them to manage the afternoons, or manage the fire company?
Well, in fact, it might be both of those things, right, like realistically, we know that the chief is, is definitely doing both of them, so what we're saying is, we would like in return for doing this, we would like clarity on what those roles are that we're giving the stipends for, and what the expectations are.
Yeah, I, I think they're asked, you have, we have to sit down now, but on the stipends for the, the highway department, how, how is that gonna work, I mean, the last time?
And I'm not sure that's in here anymore, is it?
I don't.
Let me go back and, I thought that, I thought that got taken out.
They're, they're on the clock, aren't they?
Yeah, but there was, well, there was one time of discussion, because three or four of the members are qualified firemen. And, you know, if we were to use them in a different role, would they get a stipend?
But if they're still on the clock as being a.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you have to have, you have to have, you have to have.
So they're getting paid by the town.
I know, but, you know, this is part of the problem of a labor shortage. There's just no, the part of the things that drive people being here at night, is so many of the people are coming so far from a distance. You know, they're Housatonic, they're New Marlboro, they're Sandersville, they're not, they're not in the, this community, so you have to send the truck out, because these guys are gonna need twenty more minutes to commute to the where they gotta go. Which, it's, it's a real issue, not only for our community, but I just don't, I don't mind spending more money, I just don't want to throw money at it.
To pay it, um, some type of stipend.
It was taken out.
It was taken out, I, I recall it being taken out, but I wanna make sure, thank you.
We don't need to talk about it, I mean, but, my point is, you know, you know, we need, I, I, I think there's gotta be some written rules.
Okay, so the second piece is how are you feeling about those hard numbers, like?
Well, I, I don't know, you know, I don't, I, I don't know enough of the history, I mean, my, you know, one of the reactions I have, okay, you're going from a hundred to a hundred and twenty at night, right? Twenty, twenty-five, what happens if it was a hundred and nine, a hundred and twenty, it's still a twenty percent increase. Okay, you know, it's a ways to save money there, so we got our, our, you know, we're holding it on, doesn't mean we don't commit, you know, hold, you know, doing something the next two years, but, you know, it's, it's a big, big number, I, I just think that.
A second, I'm checking that. That brought it, I, I set the, currently, I set the stipend to zero, so I could just see what the effect of the change from the forty fifty thing was, and changing that to one twenty brought me down to two thirty, two one thirty, what was it with one twenty five?
Uh, it was two with.
Two fifty six three?
It was two fifty six three.
So there's the twenty grand.
I, I, I would suggest that.
I, I, I mean, I, you know.
And that makes, it makes sense, it's still something, it looks good.
Yeah, well, I, I know, you know, for a variety of reasons, there's been no change in those stipends. It's gotten a lot harder to manage because the turnover, people, there's not, you know, twenty-five years ago, I'm told you could get fifteen guys to manage. So he's spending more time managing it, two is the complexity of the regulation, state and federal, in the way, you know, I've learned a lot, meeting with these guys has really changed, so you gotta do these training sessions.
There actually only changes at four grand.
You know, you gotta do all these kinds of things.
One twenty-five to one twenty.
They might be changing the one hundred to one.
Yeah, it doesn't change anything.
It doesn't, the, the, the change from one twenty-five to one twenty, only changes at four grand.
And then it's not.
Right, and that, that's over, that's over everybody, I'm inclined to leave it at one twen, if it's only four grand, I'm inclined to leave it at one twenty-five for them.
But what's driving the, the number then, is it, okay, you got twenty, forty, you got sixty-five in management.
It's the forty to fifty.
That, that changed it, we swapped it, we switched to forty.
And, and that was, on the basis, there would be six person, six people on each call?
No, I think it's the number of, I think it's the total number of calls.
The way, the way they factor, figure the math is, yeah, they, they, they say they're gonna do a hundred and sixty-five calls, a fifty dollar rate, and the number of staff showing up is six.
Wow, okay.
And then they multiply that, multiply that times two for two hours.
I'm not playing the devil advocate here, do they have any statistics on all that, cause if you're only saying there's, if you're doing day calls and there's only four showing up, and now we're saying.
Right, they're ending up with extra at the end of the day, because, but then again, you don't know if you get, uh, you get mutual aid, you end up.
Well, I think if you go back, I, I know when I was on the finance committee, the, I looked, going back, their manning was always way under budget. You know, cause they didn't have the resources, I mean.
For, for the fire department.
Oh, yeah, mhm.
Or company, whatever, you know.
Well, it's the fire department when it's labor, it's fire company when it's the building.
Oh, jeez, like it was, was it hard enough?
Should have a different name.
So I, I'm gonna say, let's leave it at one twenty-five, because I feel like they really wanted to make sure that the all of the members were getting compensation, and that's only a four thousand dollar difference, so if we're gonna monkey with it, let's monkey with the stipends.
That, that, that's fine with, I, I understand the reasoning, too, you know, I understand why they need to got, like, not the person there at night, because of.
So what do we wanna do for the stipends, what do we wanna offer?
Give me thanks, uh, Phil. I, I wanna go back, and I know it's only four thousand dollars, for changing to one twenty, one twenty-five, but they're also looking to have two people next year. And, and that spot where the, uh, weekends, five thirty to five thirty, five fifteen, so I don't know, I, I don't know if there's.
I have a question.
Evening, the evening overnight, is that a little bit?
The weekends.
Weekends.
So, so right now, they have evenings, five thirty P M to five thirty A M overnight, and then weekends, they have five thirty A M to five thirty P M. They're, they're only, they're only factoring one staff in position, but they want two.
Okay, cause see two at evening overnight, not weekends.
Correct, they, they want, they want two for that next year, so I don't know if that, I know it's only four thousand dollars, but it's gonna, you know.
Well, it doesn't mean, well, I have a question, have we looked at what anybody else does?
Would anybody else be?
Well, I do, other, or the other towns, they're captains, I, 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 I think our captains need to be paid, or the chief.
So it's tricky, a lot of the other towns, they don't have a shift system, they're having trouble with retention, Reed, they're basically almost have no fire department at all anymore, um, except for the ones that are paid, like Barrington. But they're paid, that are, they're full-time staff, so, right, so.
But they're not staffed every night or something, Barrington's staffed every night, or they're, they leave something.
I don't know, I know Lee is staffed twenty-four seven with firefighter paramedics, um, I'm not sure what the Barrington thing is, but I'm pretty sure they're staffed, they have full-time firefighters. Yeah.
Great, great Barrington.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they're a full-time fire company.
But, I mean, but, I mean, great Barrington's, thirteen, fourteen thousand people, I'm thinking about the, oh, Mike, what does New Marlboro, Sandersville do there? Yeah, I.
Don't go to Sandersville, because they're not a good example, because they're having, I think they're down to like, five, that'd be the fire department. Right, so, they can't, they're, they're having trouble fielding even one truck if they do have a fire, and we're ending up going now, because they, they can't, yeah, I don't wanna speak out.
Well, I, 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 I see, well, this is the question I get, is, and I think it's a fair question, are you just setting us up to be the firehouse for the, you know, multiple communities, and we're paying for it?
At the end of the day, if we do end up with a fire district where we are doing that, they're gonna be paying for it, because they're gonna become part of the district, and they're gonna have to pay into the district.
I know, but you know how hard it's gonna be to get to a fire district, it's just like, it's like the waterfront taxes. You have to have, you know, you vote for it on a warrant, you know, you know, we're, Mike, I, I have no experience doing so, but I bet you two or three, if we started today, it'd take two or three years.
Least.
I, I don't doubt it, and I mean.
The state just not, does not just sign up to create fire districts.
No, no, I, I, you're not gonna get a disagreement from me, the only I'm gonna put out there is that, at this point, if we wanna keep fire department and have fire, fire protection, I don't really see us having, just having spent all this time talking to all these different fire chiefs. I don't know what options we have, um, because.
I think that the, the point that you were making, Frank, is a point that a lot of other communities, that was, actually, people brought that stuff up at that fire department meeting, was me, on the emergency management piece where they're investing in capital, and they're not seeing one hundred percent usage of the capital, so like Lee, for example, or Lennox, or one of these companies, they're investing in capital, and because of mutual aid, it's just the, the nature of the beast, is you, you're, you're never gonna get, because of mutual aid, one hundred percent use of your vehicle. Because you have mutual aid, to your point, some, some fire, local fire department, local fire company is, can't put people out of, out of the field, so you just, it's the nature of the beast, you just go help them, and so I think it's always gonna be an issue, and we're just gonna have to sort of suck it up.
Well, I, 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 I mean, you know, Susan, you bring up a very good point, you know, do we wanna be a community that has good public safety? Okay, that, that's a question, do you want a community, and, you know, I, I think we've gone yes, but I, I do think, you know, I'm not opposing to spending money, but I, I do think we need to think it through, and then, you know, I feel like, I'm not saying it's wrong, the fire company, fire department showing up, we need everything that's right now. And I'm like, wow, you know, you know, you know, cause I mean,
I, I agree.
Yeah, I only had a few thousand, million dollar trucks, and this and that, and, you know, in my opinion, you know, it's on public radio or whatever, they, you know, they don't do a good job promoting what they do. You know, I had an article about the fire truck, I didn't information on it, you know, most of the pulling team, you know, uh, cause I think we need it. Do we wanna be a family, you know, I have a twenty-five or a thirty-year-old fire truck, I just don't, I just don't think that's what we want.
Well, plus, at the end of the day, we think, there are rules about how old your fire truck.
Yeah, but, Kyringham was noisy.
Yes, and look what just happened.
What happened?
They were the, the Princeville.
Oh, San Antonio.
Oh, that was Sandersville, sorry, not Kyringham.
I think they were going.
Yeah, right, I.
No, they were supposed to be, they weren't, how they turned up over there, I was just wondering about that, knowing not a Mister Man, even I know that if I was coming off I was going in the wrong direction.
So you want, you want, is there a decision you wanna make on the budget on this one?
I, I would like to actually try to make a decision though, because I think we need to have a number in here, and I need to be able to go to them and say what we decided, like, so the numbers on the table were, and I agree with you, I also wanna say, we need to have some type of, um, a job description, or a um, participation level that people have to meet, at the end of the day, we need to have some, something that indicates that the people receiving the stipend did something that we're giving them the stipend for.
Yeah, well, so is that, is that in the place where you have the twenty thousand dollars, you wanna leave that blank right now, or?
Well, it's, I, mine is currently blank, but the question is, what should be the numbers we're putting on the table? So the numbers we floated at the meeting were ten, ten, well, it's only the two of us, and you know, ten, ten, twenty and twenty-five, it's a lot of money, it's, at the end, at the, when you count it up, it's sixty-five K, right, so the original proposal they had was five at twenty-four K each, and then they, there wasn't really a fifth person, so it was four at twenty-four K each, right, what is that, that's.
Well, I think there's a couple things that.
Forty, twenty-four K is ninety-six, right, cause twenty-five was a hundred and.
Ninety-six, yeah.
Well, there's, I think you have to set up expectations. Okay, so that was the one thing, uh, specifically when we take in the leadership, and I'm not saying to not do this moment in college, for the ten years ago, but you know, I can't change history on that, but I would also caution them about, you know, we have other pressures, and that, you know, next year might not be as a general, I put it that way.
Where, it's not gonna go up to sentimental for sure.
I know, it's not, but I mean, that, and two is they need to start talking about the mutual aid and the, you know, the whole fire district, like you, like, you know, you know, I think about Otis and Becca doing their police chief, and according to Gary up there, it's going really well, you know, what other, you know, we gotta start thinking that these expenses are gonna go up and go up, there's gotta become, how do we share these expenses?
So the other thing that, uh, I'm gonna bring this to conclusion, and then I wanna talk about the shared services thing, cause I do have a little update that I think to share with you guys from that conversation, it was sort of a separate piece, but we need to have some numbers that I can go back to, so, um, do we wanna do ten, ten, twenty, twenty-five, do we wanna bring it, do you wanna put out different numbers, ten, ten, fifteen, twenty, ten, ten, twenty, twenty, wait, I, I need to tell them what we came to.
Well, I, I'm gonna answer your question with a question.
Question, oh, God.
I, I don't have a problem with the ten, twenty, twenty-five, but I wanna know what I'm getting from them. I, you know, if you're paying someone, you know, to be the twenty-five, and we say, okay, we gotta have an EEOC thing, are they required to come? They're a manager, you're paying them to manage, you, you can put any label you want on it, stipend, salary, wage, you can put anything label on it, but you're paying them to manage, but if we have something missed, is that management team gonna do what the other management teams do?
I'm, I'm writing apps, um, I, I agree, yeah.
I, I understand they work hard and they're committed a hundred and twenty percent, but when you go with these numbers and you open up this can of worms, which I'm saying we have to do, because it's a public safety issue, there's a labor shortage, we've been through that.
They've also gotta understand.
There's got, there's the other side of the coin, you know, and there, you know, there's things we do that we don't wanna do, you know, it's, you do it through your whole career, because we take that, that part, but, you know, oh, we're just gonna sign up for a stipend because we've, you know, we've been, hadn't been paid, but I think there's gotta be, okay, you know, are they gonna commit a couple hours to write the job description, work with us, this is the agreement, are we just gonna go back and do it and send them a check? I mean, we want them to be a part of the management team, part of the negotiations with, we've had with them, it's been about having a new beginning and a partnership. This is part of the partnership, we're willing to commit, you know, uh, sixty-five thousand dollars, what does that partnership give them? We're acknowledging them, this is, you're important, okay, and I would suspect if you went to New Marlboro, Sandersville, Otis, they're probably not getting that kind of compensation.
They don't get anything.
They're not.
They're not getting anything.
I know they're not getting anything, but that's okay, because we make, we as the select board are making it a, a priority. Um, I don't know why my son calls me on Wednesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, it's like, it's like clockwork.
So you're, so what you're saying, Susan, is just like it would be twenty-five thousand dollars for the chief, twenty thousand for the assistant chief, and then ten thousand for each of those.
Captains.
To the captain.
Yeah.
Um, so I mean, uh.
And that, all of that, everything we, oh, I didn't put in everything here. That, that brought mine to a seven point one four budget, but I'm not sure, I don't think I put in, uh, some of the things we said tonight, I just noted them, like I didn't put in the decrease.
Yeah.
For the school or the.
Years.
So.
If some people are getting a stipend, then they would be off of the fifty-dollar a call list.
No.
They would still be getting that.
Mm-hmm.
Give something back to.
Okay.
The, the stipend is essentially for, uh, an addition because of, basically they're doing other management things.
Well, yeah, the, the other thing is when you send them out on a call, there's a probability they're in their own car. Okay, it's called a new Marlboro, you know, they're driving seventeen miles, you know, it could be fifteen miles there, fifteen miles back. And they spent, you know, twelve thousand, ten dollars on gas, you, you just, you know, that's part of that whole shared service, that's what we signed up for. So you, you gotta do it, you know?
And it's recognition of a compensation for the shit.
Yeah, no, I just, I just wanted to know if it was really that, that, that's, I'm just gonna say you can drop some over the line.
No, yeah, it's both, it's a recognition. Yeah, it's recognition for the compensation for all of the missed hours of work plus, you know, the chief's spending something like a thousand hours a year.
Well, it's.
On fire department services, not ten dollars.
Just, just go back to.
It's a lot of hours.
I have a note.
I, to answer Frank's first question, I, I would say quarterly, at the end of each quarter.
Okay, quarterly.
So, do you have a note here, assess those?
No, I, I, I don't have a problem with that, I mean.
Okay, it's a reasonable.
Duty chief.
Can't get it all across, you can't wait till the end of the year, and I think quarterly is a nice, originally what.
I mean, I, I mean, meeting with the fire company has been very educational, we got a huge problem.
So was forty.
We're gonna have to spend money, I just wanna make sure we're spending it wisely.
Yeah.
I have a note.
You know, it's a real problem.
It says currently forty, yeah, it says currently.
Okay, so, so it's one twenty-five for all those shift rate ones, but then the, the weekend duty chief, the evening duty chief. And the calls that require more staff than duty shift, should those be fifty?
No, so, well, so, so, so currently what I have, I have a note here.
Okay.
It says the current, current, for this fiscal year.
Right. Right.
It's the, the weekends, uh, the, the weekend shift is one hundred. And that's what, that's what actually, bones true, man. So this rate, so this, this currently, this rate is one hundred.
Oh, right now, it's one hundred, so if this has it at one twenty-five, goes up to twenty-five, one twenty-five, right?
Yeah. But that, that's what was proposed.
And the next one is what?
The next one is forty, which has been proposed.
Okay.
And then one twenty-five, and then forty.
Right. Going to fifty?
Yeah, and that one's still forty.
And the training is forty and was forty?
Yep, and then the, the next one down is fifty.
Okay. Fifty, awesome, okay, so I do have the correct number.
Those, those, those one twenty-fives and those fifties are proposed.
Right, no, I got that, but we had agreed previously that those were there, it was just one of the, we had everybody meetings and the, the discussion since, so I wasn't messing around.
It's just that, that other one was backwards, so.
Right. So Justin, because you put in all the other changes.
Yeah, what do you want, you put in for this one?
Um, so I just wanna see what it comes out as, hang on a second. Um, if we go to for, for fire department. If we go to fire department compensation, if you put three oh one, three hundred.
Seven percent.
Yeah, okay, that's about what I have to.
Seven point zero zero.
I got seven point one four, but that's because I don't have the decreases, the other, I didn't enter it.
Yeah, yeah, this one's.
So, still better than the eleven percent we wanted.
Eleven percent?
Seven point zero zero percent.
Five something, I can't remember.
Almost six, I think.
Five nine four.
Thirty. So, and you know, if you, this is, this would be the time to tell me you wanna change those numbers. So, I mean, and I get it, like, I, I feel both ways about it.
How do you think they're gonna feel about what I've talked about?
About putting some, some kind of job description or, or like a clarity of what that stipend is for. Um, I think we'll bop a little, but it's hard to imagine that they wouldn't understand why we're asking for it. Right, like some clarity of what's involved, number of hours of service or management duties or something. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a reasonable ask myself. The, the, the journey between reasonable ask and completion of task is a different question.
Well, that's a whole part of the job description.
I know, I know.
You know, completion of task, and you know.
But you know, if it's a answer the call or write the job description, we know what they opt in favor of it, I'm not gonna blame them for that, so. But we still, at the end of the day, we still need it. So I will contact both, so do I have permission from the board as a whole to contact council about the nature of the stipend?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and I'm gonna also reach out to the accountant for the same purpose.
Yeah, I think, I think you, yeah, that would be good.
Okay.
And why not the treasurer?
Oh, okay, so treasurer accountant and counsel.
Cause they have comments on payroll and such.
Okay, that's fine, I don't mind.
Not that she won't be overwhelmed.
Yeah, I know.
But.
And I will also, uh. Uh, then about that, okay, well, so yeah.
Okay. Are we done with budget for today?
Let's see if, that's all the things I have.
The next, the next item, well, and then here's another question. Are there any other comments on the town meeting where it's also EEO seven? So I understand if, uh. A lot of the articles are money articles.
Yeah, they are.
Oh, yeah, I have one more.
Yep.
Um, so the fire chief also said that this is, it's a question possibly for council. As to whether we need to ask for a change in the wording regarding the med vehicle.
What was the problem?
Um, because it looks like we had the original town meeting pass to purchase equipment, modify a medical rescue sport utility vehicle. Um, and they're thinking they might, it, it's not gonna involve any change in the budget, but go to a modified truck. So they wanna make a medical rescue vehicle instead of medical rescue sport utility vehicle.
Oh, it's sport utility.
I thought we're expecting delivery of that in the next.
No, they didn't, they never ordered anything, that's what he said.
But we've been told.
I know, I was confused, but, I know.
I was expecting it.
We've been told, we put money in the budget to pay down the principal.
I, I, I am confused by this, but he told me they never ordered anything.
Oh.
Can you get to?
Look at your face. I know, okay, so it's not just me, I, I was like, oh, I must have counted wrong and that must have been for something else, but I, I don't know. He told me that they hadn't ordered anything.
We were, we were all this time that something was ordered and being delivered.
No, not only ordered, but like expected within the next couple of months to the point where we're paying principal on it in November, paying interest on November. We have twenty-nine set aside to be principal.
Right, so, I, so I thought that too, but he said, no, we haven't ordered anything and I'm like, it must have been something else in the budget. But apparently I didn't misremember, okay, so.
So if that's the case.
Where did that number come from?
What number?
Where did that, if, if he was right and they didn't order anything, why did we think otherwise?
Because we think they were ordering it.
We were told that we were expecting delivery in the next couple of months.
The question is who told us that?
And a six-month note would come due in November.
But the question is, where, we were told that.
Yes.
Who, who told?
Where did that originate, is my question?
Who told you guys?
Well, it's.
Who told you? Uh, I think it was you guys.
I didn't say a word, I did not say that, I wonder why we're getting another, I don't know.
I swear to God.
I know.
That we were, we were even given a interest payment.
I know, and, but where, the question is, if he's saying they, that he didn't order it, why did we think that?
Why do we get an interest payment?
We got five thousand dollars for interest.
Roger, can you please search your emails? At some point, how the hell, sorry.
That's okay, I, I don't mind, they, they know.
Can you look back to emails with Sarah and figure out where the interest payment on the medical rescue vehicle came from? Because we've been given an, an interest payment of, and this is a number you can probably just search from your email for this exact number and it should pop up. Of, um, we were told, oh, maybe it was an estimate, because the interest due was five thousand dollars, exactly in zero cents.
Exactly. Ah, okay.
A meeting with her tomorrow, Sarah, from, from the, from the traders, right? Ask me, and whatever. Where did we come up with, but there has to be some documentation that says.
Do, do, do you have access in Melissa's old emails under that?
Yeah.
Do, do a search and just medical vehicle or whatever it is, and you'll probably come up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll search for it. I'm, I'm meeting with Sarah and Eric tomorrow.
Thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand eight hundred dollars.
Do you have any, uh, do you have any preference where that money should go?
You want us to pay down man, principal a little bit next year? It's on, on the warrant issues on the fire truck that you put in here, you have the vote? The select board supports this article three to nothing, can you vote for that?
Yeah, those are drafts, but I, I can change that, where's that?
Okay, I, I. It's article.
There aren't, they aren't numbered yet, which ones to vote, the fire truck?
I, I didn't even, I never remembered that would be a goal.
Yeah, I can vote on the fire truck.
Oh, you can?
And I just gave it a rest.
Um, so.
It's not about my personal financial or a relative's personal financial.
So whatever the confusion is about this, the fire chief said to me that they haven't ordered a vehicle. And that the original plan was to try to use the body, the chassis of one, and it was a complicated thing.
Yeah, they worked on it.
And in the end, they've decided that's actually gonna be more problematic. And they have another solution that involves using, buying a truck and, and equipping and modifying it, and it would come in at the same amount.
Okay, so this all stemmed because last year, the initial plan was to make a medical rescue brush truck, right?
Right.
And then that became not even possible or super expensive. So then the backup plan was buy an SUV. And that ran you somewhere in the seventy to ninety thousand dollar range. And then spend the remaining money taking the brush truck bed. Where the bed would normally be and plopping that on the cab and chassis of what's currently Rescue Nine. They don't wanna do that anymore.
No, basically what he described to me, I can, I'll look at the notes and say what he described to me was, uh. Original idea was to repurpose the brush, brush truck chassis by, now they're talking about buying a truck, putting on a pump module. Um, a truck with a crew cab, taking out a seat for gear, in the end we have three seats.
But where, where we buy that truck, with what money?
It's with the same money that was originally, that's why they wanna change the wording.
With a hundred and twenty-nine dozen, we're gonna be able to buy a truck and an SUV?
That's what. He says it would be for the same amount of money, I don't know, like, I'm just going by what he said.
How would we buy, uh, like those F five fifties or three fifties, you know what we're spending on them? And then an SUV.
Medical brush fires and winter ops.
You're trying to buy a team vehicle or one vehicle?
One vehicle.
So he's gonna, he's, he's, he's gonna, what he, what he was trying to do is a four-door vehicle without the bed on the back of the truck.
One vehicle, he wants to sell it to exist in their own option.
And he's gonna put something on the back of the truck.
But that, wasn't that kind of like the initial plan?
I, I don't know, I, I, I'm not sure I remember the initial plan, the most.
The initial plan I remember was combining the two vehicles with some modification. Well, way back, way back.
Right.
And it was gonna be like two hundred something thousand, they were gonna put, they were gonna make a truck that had the brush fighting stuff on it, the brush firefighting.
Right.
Water hoses and also the medical stuff.
Right.
Then they were like, no, forget about that, we're gonna get an SUV, which is affordable and a good way to do it. And then to keep the brush truck limping along, we'll take the brush fighting stuff and throw it on the Rescue Nine cab and everything. Which is not a super reliable vehicle, but how many brush fires are there here, right? As opposed to medical calls, so the idea was the SUV goes to medical calls and then the other ones for firing brush fires.
Not right for that, and I think what they're doing is they're just going to a single vehicle that they think they can use for medical brush fires and winter operations, because it'll be.
I don't see how you can have a, a brush fire truck and a.
Medical, yeah, very good at distracting.
I, I don't think I'd wanna be bleeding and laying in the back of something that's been fighting brush fires, unless that was the only thing available and it was an emergency.
Well, I, I don't know.
It might not be, I think it's to get to the site and, and give aid, but not necessarily to evac them from.
I don't even wanna speculate anymore because I'm frankly confused.
I know, I, join the gang, I wasn't confused, I, I convinced me that I had it wrong, but now I'm like, no, that works.
I, I was going along with it because I just figured, I never heard it, you know, I just missed it.
I know, so.
But that's not my job.
What he was asking is to change the wording, so it's.
Yeah, but what can I say, I have to be a select board, you know, and you, so what if.
Yeah, but first of all, you gotta take the money out here.
I did ask him to write it up and I haven't received anything, so.
And then can we, it's also a little bit interesting that we thought we were getting a vehicle in the next few months. And then we're gonna be paying interest on it in November. And what are we gonna do with that money? My, my instinct would be anything that was in the operating budget, just zero it out and that's fine. And that anything that was in free, coming from free cash, what we should do is put it against the hundred and ninety thousand dollar truck. That we're currently have a hundred and sixty thousand coming from stabilization to make it, let's say we have an extra fifteen. It would only be a hundred and forty-five coming from stabilization.
Okay, but even if we don't actually have that thing coming, don't we still have to have money in the budget during the fiscal year for when it does come?
For interest?
Oh, I, maybe not for interest.
The thing was, we are already jumping ahead of ourselves to do what we did and say we'll put, we'll pay off a fifth of it.
How much was that? I, I don't have, I don't see the medical rescue.
Medical vehicle was gonna be a hundred and thirty-eight, or a hundred and thirty-nine?
Oh, it was twenty-nine.
It was, it started at one twenty-nine, right? And then what we were gonna do was say, we'll divide it in five.
Right.
So we were gonna put twenty-five thousand eight hundred towards it.
Yeah.
But I have no interest in putting twenty-five thousand eight hundred towards a vehicle that may or, that probably wouldn't be here till.
He hasn't ordered it, and then he has to convert it.
Yeah. I mean. We need him to come in here and say it to the group of us so that we can have clarity, because like, I was like, okay, we can change that.
Well, I think.
But he convinced me that I hadn't ordered it, so.
I know, but he needs to be told, do not order anything, we see this left board and explain.
Well, he hasn't ordered anything, so.
I know, but, yeah, but I, you know.
We thought that they had?
I don't, I don't know.
I am confused, okay.
But, okay, but that being said, basically there was twenty-five thousand and change that was coming out of free cash to pay principal on that vehicle.
Yep.
I'm assuming we're not gonna pay principal on it if we're not even gonna, if it's not ordered yet.
Sure.
If it's delivered at some point next year, we owe interest on it, Sarah would take out like whatever loan we lined up with November. And then the following, in fiscal year twenty-six, we would pay down the interest and our first principal payment.
Cause the bottom line is, we're not gonna receive anything in the next six months if it hasn't been ordered, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, to me, you have to get the truck here and then you have to do the conversion.
But, but, but the money would start being due upon arrival, upon.
So, and.
But I don't think it's, it doesn't sound like it's happening anytime soon.
Although if they're buying a standard off the lot model, I don't know.
Yeah, but we need to talk to him, you could.
You need to come in and explain.
I'm specific.
You probably could, you know, get a F three, F four fifty relatively quick with no bed on it. But I don't know if he needs special, you, you know, then you have to.
There's too many unknowns.
Yeah, then you have to fit it for lights and all the shine.
He had the whole list. And it was unclear whether they were all possible or actual or.
That was a lot to say it after eight P M.
I think we're all, we're all kinda done.
I'm done, I make a determined meaning, I'm going home and get a drink.
I gotta hold big before I die here.
I'm on here, I'm on the internet time, it's two o'clock in the morning.
All right. The bottom line is, he needs to come talk to us, are we meeting next week?
Yeah.
I'm happy to meet. Friday to do some minutes and stuff.
Oh, that was the other thing, the next thing is minutes, what are we talking about minutes, guys?
I'm around.
Well, we have a. Not that we're about minutes, but we have the three, six minutes which we could do, I don't do three twelve executive session, which leaves three seven and three twelve.
Right. Do you want, I I would take on doing the three seven minutes.
Three seven, and I'll do three twelve.
But somebody, I need the film.
Three forty, I'm recording.
Recording.
We'll put it up.
Okay.
Want me to do three twelve?
You wanna do three twelve?
Yeah, you're on the executive, you don't, you gotta do more.
Sure. Okay.
That's what we'll do for now, I'll say.
I I'm around on Friday, you know, I got a doctor's appointment on the morning. You said you'd Friday or whatever.
Well, I I got work Friday, but.
I I'm okay with doing them next week, if I I don't have, I mean, next week to get it done.
But we got the budget.
I just like to, I thought we were getting squared away and now we have some decisions to make.
I'm sorry. I was trying to wait till we got to it.
It's not a surprise, cause this is.
I thought it was so straightforward to just take out a sport utility.
No, but 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 I.
Are we all, is this like Stockholm's in there? We're all thought that this thing was coming in November.
Well, that that's what I was trying, who was the original one that said we needed that?
I don't know.
I don't know, I'm I'm gonna go home and do a search on emails, cause I know.
I'll let it see, I'm not gonna Sarah tomorrow, I'll ask Sarah.
I'm not gonna point fingers.
I'm not, I wouldn't even know what to point to, cause at this point, I I I literally thought I must have had it wrong, so.
I'm gonna give him raises when we understand the, uh. I don't see this.
There was some miscommunication somewhere.
I know it has to be in the job description.
The one thing I know for sure is, at least I feel better that I wasn't wrong in thinking that it was we ordered, been ordered and it was in the budget, like, I I thought I just was confused, but no, I was right.
You thought it was you?
And I didn't know that.
So what if, so, I don't wanna get too far ahead, but it would make me feel comfortable to know that we have a meeting coming up in the future, um.
You gave us a whole sheet, we have a meeting custody next week.
I know, next Tuesday, but then the finance committee, one and a half the finance committee isn't available next Tuesday, so what about Monday?
Do you wanna? Monday, I don't. I I have to get pick my work up at the airport.
On Monday?
Which airport?
Yeah, but she's coming from New York.
What about this Friday?
Friday afternoon, I'm free.
I I might not be free, so.
Not Friday?
Well, we could.
But if we're.
Some of the consequences kind of.
If the goal was just minutes, we'd probably be over that.
Well, it's not just minutes, I'm getting to the point where we're ready to tackle the budget a couple of times, because
I know.
The question is, okay, so if this truck's really not coming, what do we do with the money, we can do what I just said, but it's, you just start a conversation.
Right.
Once you start changing something like that, if you have.
It's what they're taking out of. I thought it was just taking two words out, I saw that too. Oh my god, it seems so simple.
Why is nothing simple, so, uh, you want, like, is Monday better?
Monday, Frank's.
I can understand.
Oh, right.
What about, what about meeting in the middle of the day on Monday?
I was just gonna say.
I'm perfect for Monday.
Uh, I got the dentist.
What time?
I have the dentist starting at, uh, twelve fifteen.
Look, I just. Yeah, but that's what happened.
What?
Well, I I just had my dental work, I came home at five o'clock.
I know, he said I might be drooling.
I might be drooling, I told her to that, I go, I'm drooling, I'm not having shit.
We're going to nine in the morning.
Nine thirty.
Okay.
Nine thirty, Monday morning?
Yeah.
Nine thirty, Monday morning?
And what, so, and then we need to, is the agenda minute plus?
Yeah, no, like the budget.
Okay.
Budget better.
The warrant.
I also think we gotta do the minutes.
Fire vehicles, figuring out the fire vehicles.
Well, I just wanna find out where that came from, oh my god.
What what?
I didn't even raise my budget on Monday.
He doesn't, he doesn't quit by that.
Monday at nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
Monday, nine thirty, S B. Okay, um, and I will, I mean, I don't know that we're.
That's a great date for me, wake up to the select board, go to the dentist.
What do you want?
Who'd you rather go, I I had the dentist and then the select board, what are you doing now?
We're all doing dentists these days, what do you want me to do about trying to get?
I tell you, what the select board was a lot cheaper.
When do we try and get Sean to come clarify?
Monday, but you can't.
Monday at nine thirty, or it's, you want him, the finance committee here?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask, because Eileen just said she can't be at the meeting on Tuesday night.
Is that Tuesday or Thursday? And I, I thought she said, th- what, we were talking Thursday then?
Like glanced at it, but we set those meetings a month or two.
I know, right?
We did, cause I looked at the sheet today.
I know, I don't know why she suddenly can't do it, but whatever. Um, okay, so I will ask Sean, but he may not be able to.
Yeah, understood, we might have to set, we might double up next week.
Okay.
Because basically what happened was, we were narrowing down the budget. And there's a couple remaining questions, and then that is a little bit of a thing we have to figure out. And I wanna go over the warrant, and we got minutes to do and stuff, so Monday, I would expect, we've been so good for the most part keeping meetings under two hours.
I know.
But you skipped a couple weeks.
But it's. This time of year, it's like not surprised, so, okay, I will ask the fire chief to can join us at nine thirty that morning, if he can't, what should I give as the backup?
Well, nine thirty or ten thirty, and otherwise, we just have to do later that meeting.
I I I, you could, you could tell him the bank will be closed if he doesn't come.
No, it it may be working, I don't know, but but we'll have to basically game plan other than that, cause maybe Tuesday night?
Okay, because if the, if the.
Are people free Tuesday night?
I am, I I've got nine, I've got the six o'clock already blocked out.
Well, we might double up, but I I don't wanna run into another three hour meeting.
No, I better to.
I'd rather come in Monday morning, I got like.
But we might, but we have an end moment, because he's gonna have to leave for his dental appointment, so if it's not done, we have to reconvene.
Oh, yeah, but that's two and a half hours into the meeting.
Right, okay, fair, I don't know where your dentist is, Great Barrington, okay?
That would save me some time.
I go to Pittsfield, so you know, can I join you?
Um, okay, so my head's spinning.
So 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 what, whatever's left on the the agenda for tonight, we'll talk to him, talk about on Monday?
Well, kind of, what about this ambulance meeting?
Oh, uh, so far it's just us and Barrington.
It just, there's. But it's very confusing, because Sheffield said they're not coming, and someone from Sheffield said they're coming.
Yeah, well, I called them.
Who said that they were coming?
Uh, uh, town clerk, yeah, I think it was, it sent me an email, a very cryptic email, so I was assuming.
So I talked to Renee Wood today, uh, today.
And then Sheffield, then Sheffield called me and and then sent the, sent the letter, and said they weren't coming.
Yeah, Sheffield, I I talked to.
Why isn't Sheffield coming?
Basically, they don't think that it's worth, the essence of Renee's response was that um, they feel it's a very reasonable amount for the service they're getting, and they don't see any, it's all been discussed before. They think it's a reasonable assessment method, and that we shouldn't be asking more of Barrington. Um, she she floated the they might pull out thing, and I said they're not gonna pull out, they don't have an ambulance anymore, the chief doesn't support it. It would cost them a lot more, even if they went up to three fifty, it would cost them a million dollars to run their own ambulance. And she responded, well, we don't know what they're gonna do, they change their mind all the time, they could go back to supporting it, I'm like, okay. But the bottom line is, they don't wanna waste the time because they don't think it will be productive, because they're not gonna change their mind.
So I. So I, yeah, someone told me that if so, such and such town didn't pay their full due, Sonnevers would come as long as you know, they would come to so many calls, and then they would say, well, you used up your.
Alman.
Alman, but it's not per call. There's no call volume factor, so it shouldn't matter how many calls there are, right? So there's two things going on, one is seventy thousand roughly, what we're paying is like so reasonable for an ambulance, and two is the assessment methodology sucks.
Yeah.
And it's makes no sense, it's not good. So maybe we just suck it up, pay the seventy thousand and live with it, and if there's no interest among these other small towns, let's just call off the meeting.
That, that was.
Cause it was, I think it was Alfred.
Alfred is the only other one that, the only one that quotes us.
But that's a new study, or something, Alfred?
No, no, Alfredton.
Yeah.
Sonnevers, I say we just call off the meeting, because we were gonna say to other towns, is anyone else concerned that call volume isn't even a factor in the assessment, and apparently they're not concerned, and there's nothing we can do about it.
They they think it's just good, this is a reasonable assessment method, and they're paying a reasonable amount, and it is, you know, compared to what it would cost you to run your own ambulance, it's cheap, right, so.
But and what, when I tell people that I talk to them, that call volume isn't a factor, they say, what? It's not a factor?
And Renee actually said to me, she didn't think call volume was a very good way to assess the amount.
What is there, is she the town man, the town, town manager?
She's one of the select.
They're they're using the fact that Great Barrington has more than just their citizens.
Like the businesses that pay taxes.
Everybody does.
Like, did they, they, you know, that's what they always say, they always go, well, they've got the ski resort.
I know.
They got this, they got that.
But and you know what, those ski resort people, they're one hundred percent paying according to S B A, they care, they're actually paying for the ambulance service, because the people that can afford the hundred and twenty dollar equipment, all have insurance. They're not paying on many things.
Okay, so I I I will, I will contact Great Barrington after, tell them.
And we're just not doing it.
Why not pay it and then say, after it's paid, you know, you're two months into it, say, could we review how this is worked out?
Because that's where we did last year, and this is where we are, and no one else cares.
We got.
Okay.
And no one else.
I think we should just call them every day.
No, I just, I think it's crazy.
It's it's your day today, Frank.
Yeah, it's my day, I got, I got a fingernail that's.
So what, where we're leaving that one is Roger, please.
I'm on Medicare.
With Barrington also saying, there is no meeting.
There wasn't, there was, due to lack of interest.
Uh, well, two minutes, how many minutes is working is three, six, everyone's gonna send their edits to Roger, Susan has done so.
Yeah, I got one, I've been.
Actually, Roger, if you could send me the minutes with Susan's edit.
Yes.
I didn't have many edits.
True.
Three seven is Susan.
Yep.
Three twelve.
Three twelve is Frank, and three twelve executive session is me.
Right, and you're gonna post the three twelve?
Exactly, so.
Did you post the video, I will get start on them tomorrow.
Yeah, I need that.
The executive sessions are, were about negotiation, Roger's contract, it's signed, essentially.
Yeah.
So they're not gonna be executive session material any longer, because it was about negotiation strategy and negotiation, so we don't have to go into executive session or anything like that to approve them, the ones that we approved earlier will get posted.
But. Do we have, who's doing the three seven exactly if this is a separate video, you have, with their.
I haven't, approved, they're approved.
Oh, we did them already, okay, I didn't remember this three seven, I remember the three.
Yeah, we did it last time.
So I didn't post them on the website, because, uh, the negotia- because the contract had been finalized, but, uh, here we are, so.
It's finished, right. It wasn't finished, right, okay. All right.
So just, um, again, for a little unanticipated business, if you wanna do it now, we can do it Monday, whatever, but I have, uh, two, actually, two, um, special event requests.
Yeah. Let's do it Monday, just, we'll keep it simple, and, uh, so Monday, Roger, you and I will be in touch by threat tomorrow, and we'll have an agenda posted latest Thursday, nine thirty, but but probably hopefully at the end of the day tomorrow, and.
Oh, it was the three twelve executive session.
Yeah, that I'm gonna do.
So you're doing, so I'm doing three seven, Frank's doing three twelve, and you're doing three twelve exactly.
And I'm doing.
Susan, I'll reach out to the lawyer about doing a call with him.
Okay.
So on the, on the budget on Monday, you're basically set up mostly just the fire department and wanting to know where the medical vehicle is coming from.
Okay.
And the library, uh, loan.
She didn't really wanna hear that.
I will be here though.
No.
And you think the dentist will add? You'll run for the dentist.
Um, Nikki, I wouldn't say we're narrowing it to one or two.
Really, I think you gotta, I think you did a lot, I, on that project, you really.
We tried, yeah.
Really.
We're always gonna.
We did add a lot of.
I know.
That was, that was special.
I.
That's not.
I swear to god, I thought it was just get rid of the two words, because it was. But it's a good thing you put it on.
The other thing is, by the way, so for the vehicles we're buying this year, I drafted the warrant articles, there are things like buy a plow truck.
Yes, thank you for that, I did notice.
Buy a tanker engine, because there is no sense in being overly specific, right? But then you have something like buy an SUV, we thought we were buying, but we just say buy a vehicle.
Yeah.
Buy a.
Yeah, but.
Thing with wheels and an engine. I don't.
Cause the park company wants to do something. Okay, so I I said, Sean, can you please confirm that no medical rescue vehicle was ordered, and he responded, no, couldn't change it now to a truck. Which I think means, obviously we couldn't, because I couldn't be changing it now to a truck if I had already ordered the SUV. I believe that is how that.
Did you tell them that?
But that would just say who changed it.
Troy's, Troy's just told them after the year.
It's like, we.
That, that means he did not order a vehicle, maybe it means he ordered, and now we have to ascertain why we thought one was.
No vehicle is ordered.
Yeah, I I I mean.
Why we do it, because I don't even wanna know why. Did you, uh, did you officially adjourn?
Yeah. No, we didn't yet.
Uh.
Good night, it's been fun.
We'll vote on my motion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
Yeah, vote.
Yes.
Yeah.
And yes, that's unanimous, we adjourned at eight thirty-six P M.
But at least we have now ascertained that in fact, I wasn't crazy, it was in the budget, as though we had ordered it.